All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council's special meeting for Monday, April 7th. I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, if you could please take roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Present.
Member Noonan Camp?
Present.
Member Prang?
Present.
Member Russell?
Present.
Member Ward?
Member Wright?
Present.
And Mayor Sierra?
Present.
Let the record show six present, one absent.
Thank you. Member Ward did let me know he's running about 10 minutes late, so he will be here in attendance for this first item, which is the Comprehensive Plan Update. So we have Director of Community Development Brad Power, Planning Manager Brian Isom, and Senior Planner John Borbero, here to provide the update and progress on the Comprehensive Plan Supplement. Good evening, John.
Good evening. We have a lot to cover, so I'm just going to jump right into it. All right. This evening's agenda tonight, we've been very busy with Planning and Zoning Commission, working on the bulk and the meat of the comp plan update. And so we'll give you a little bit of a project summary, what we've been doing. And then we will introduce the sectoral area assessment maps, the sectoral area policy chart, the strategy chart as well. And then we'll get into a little bit more detail on certain sectoral policies that we'd like to review with you. And then we'd hopefully, we will then open it up for council discussion. We'd like to, we suggest having, first off, having conversations about the presentation, the materials that were presented to you just beforehand. And then we'd like to give you guys the opportunity to bring up any policies for a conversation that were not included in the staff presentation. So let's just review what was the City Council's direction on the comp plan update project. Project goals and boundaries needed to be communicated explicitly to the public. They, council wanted a deliberate and cautious approach and wanted to be able to review at key project milestones. There was a push to have recent projects that had been finished incorporated into the plan and keep new proposals to a minimum. Direction on state legislation and affordable housing task force would be, play a very critical role in this update. And neighborhood assessments, those were areas of sensitivity that the council also wanted to review. And there was also an emphasis on infrastructure conditions and needs. So I'm just going to jump here with the timeline process to the beginning of this year. This is when we worked and worked on the meat of the project with the maps and policies that we will be presenting to you here shortly. We had January 22nd, an open house and a Planning and Zoning Commission study session, followed with two more study sessions to keep going on the maps and policies in February. And then March 18th, another open house meeting and a study session on strategies. I also want to bring up the fact that we have also conducted some extensive outreach for, to collect opinions from the public on these policies as well. We were able to do that through our open house meetings on January 22nd and March 18th. And how we did, we conducted that was we put up large charts of all the written policies and asked participants to review those, whichever ones they wanted, whether it's in their own neighborhood or the entire city if they wanted to. And we asked them to put a green dot next to any policy that they agreed, that they were in agreement with or felt was still relevant, and to place a red dot next to any policy that they did not agree with or felt was now irrelevant. And similarly, in a similar fashion, we did that for the online surveys too, that we were assisted by the Communications Department. Once again, we asked people to review policies and indicate which ones they agreed with or felt were still relevant, or in which ones they disagreed with or felt were now irrelevant. Majority of the responses have been positive and results of surveys are included in your packet. Just for your benefit, yep, coming project schedule, we anticipate coming back to you in two weeks to discuss in greater detail the strategies. And then on, and then of course, we will follow up with anything that comes out of this meeting as well. And then on June 9th, we hope to have a draft document ready for a joint City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission study session. And if everything, if we are all reached consensus on that document, then we can go forward with the approval process. And so up first would be Planning and Zoning Commission with a July 7th public hearing and July 21st findings of fact. And then council would be up in August with a City Council public hearing, August 4th, and adoption by resolution on August 18th. So now I will introduce the sectoral area assessment maps. Remember that the existing comp plan had 13 different neighborhoods oriented around city parks. And we opted, we decided, well, now we have 40 different neighborhoods and that's a lot of maps. So we decided maps, neighborhoods weren't really what we should map, but we should map sectoral areas instead. So we pared that down to six. And those areas are central, northwest, northeast, near south, far south, and southwest. In these sectoral area assessment maps, these are very draft at this point. We're still kind of trying to improve upon them. But some of our goals were to include the new neighborhood boundaries and labels. We're still tinkering with the potential, what, should we do aerial photography underneath or not? So we're kind of still playing with that. The land use intensity layer, we have not changed. And we are looking to include transit station and corridor half and quarter mile area boundaries on these maps. And we wanted to update key sites classified by plan theme. More information about the land use intensity layer, this is something that people have a lot of questions with. So we thought we'd better explain this. So the land use intensity layer is informed by the existing zoning patterns of the community. And in early comprehensive planning, city planning history, developed in the early 20th century, the comprehensive plan and the zoning map are supposed to work together as tools. And that is how they are enshrined in state law. And so what we're trying to do with that, the land use intensity layer, it is informed by the existing zoning patterns, but does not conform 100% to those. The land use intensity layer attempts to anticipate where the community may favor zoning changes in the future. However, actual changes to the existing zoning must go through a community planning or its approval process. And so now I will explain these different land use intensity areas. There are, of course, once again, no changes currently. The Catholic Activity Areas are red. And these are areas that are found adjacent to primary corridors such as Broadway, Santa Fe, Hampton, Federal Boulevard. They're intensive commercial areas. And we expect to see large multi-unit residential projects, retail and office happen on these corridors. Adjacent to the Catholic Activity Areas is the missing middle transition zones. These are depicted in orange. And these are potential missing middle housing areas, which would range from, they're typically residential, ranging from duplex to small unit residential. Then stepping slightly away from that area, we have the residential transition area that's defined as yellow. These are single-family detached and attached areas that either are current zone that way or could be potentially in the future. And then finally, the rest of the city residential areas are areas of stability, shown as gray. These are single-family detached areas that also could do an accessory dwelling unit as well as potentially be looked at for reduced minimum lot size. So what could affect these land use intensity layers in the future? We have these transit-oriented communities legislation that the state passed last year. Requires calculation of a community housing opportunity goal. Requires local transit center designation for an area that meets the zoning potential capacity requirements. And, but it does give the city a lot of significant control of the process and discretion, which a previous legislation really did not. And so with that opportunity that the city has to make decisions, it also has to do some extra work doing that. But luckily, the state has given the city quite a bit of time, or all cities, in fact. The final TOC area submission is not due till the fourth quarter of 2026. Some other, other things that could affect that land use intensity layer in the future are small area plan processes. These are focused on specific areas of the city that are of interest. They provide specific guidance for physical and regulatory characteristics. They are recommended as strategies to be pursued to promote desired changes in the community. And the city has used the small area planning process for the downtown and wellness districts beginning in 2007. And now I'll just introduce the sectoral area policy chart. This incorporates the majority of our existing policies. It redistributes policies from 13 to six sectoral areas, plus a citywide category, and even one potential policy for our golf course, which is outside of our city. It revises language for readability, clarity, nuance, and consistency. And it also, we have looked at adding some new policies that give more clarity to the land use intensity categories and supports the TOD planning activities. The policy chart headings, there's first off the policy sector, which, which one of the six sectoral areas plus citywide and outside city. There is a policy subsector heading that includes identified local neighborhoods that are included in that area. There is a policy code, which is a unique code using letters and numerals. The policy text is the actual description of the policy. And then we have a strategies heading, which is an attempt to connect the policy with potential implementation strategies. And then we've also included a column of newer revised, and we've marked that with an X. So anything that's marked with an X is either new or revised. And then there's a justification, which is the reason for adding a new policy. And this is what this looks like. We, we have divided the northwest sector into west of Santa Fe and east of Santa Fe because they are very different areas and we thought that that would be less confusing. The central area is also divided up into four different categories. There's the downtown plan, which is the plan of development that's followed by the Downtown Development Authority, as well as areas for the Inglewood Station District, the Main Street District, and the Wellness District. Now, when it came to the strategy chart, when we got to this part, we looked at this and felt that, we went back to our past experiences and found that the strategy portion of the existing plan was not that helpful in, for council to make prioritizations and recommendations on projects going forward. And so we decided that we would be better off to revamp this section pretty much completely. The existing strategies were often written as conceptual recommendations, not easily translated into a concrete project. So we were looking to be less conceptual and much more concrete and plan and project oriented. So in that's the strategy chart, there is a strategy code with a unique code using letters and numerals for each strategy. The strategies have been classified as to one of five different strategy classes. Then there's the strategy description, an initial recommendation for a prioritization, neighborhoods that have, are included and affected by that strategy, the primary purpose, justification or reason, and then the responsible departmental parties that will implement that strategy. The five strategy classifications that we came up with are city center redevelopment, infrastructure projects, strategic plan implementation. This is implementation of existing strategic plans that we already have in place that have a lot of action steps that still need to be taken. And then there's also strategic plan development. These are strategic plans that have not yet been developed. And one example of that would be the, that Public Works would like to do a, is planning for a citywide transportation plan this year. And then finally, we have small area plans. Okay, so that now we're going to look at the, some of the sectoral policies for review. And we picked out the ones that we thought would be the most sensitive. And so those are the ones that we will discuss in more detail. And hopefully, we'll have a robust discussion from council. And then we will also allow council to choose any policy that we did not discuss for additional discussion questions and show of support. So let's start off with the central portion of Inglewood. So let's start with, this is Inglewood Station. CES3, explorer zoning options for the I-1 Zone District located between Hampton and Kenyon Avenues. And that's kind of this red area in here. And this is currently zoned industrial. However, this has not really developed as industrial over time. There are almost very, very few industrial uses. It's mostly office and highway commercial. And recently, we've had a number of different PUDs coming in there that want to do residential. And so we have kind of a mismatch there with the zoning and existing land uses and potential land uses that seem, that the market seems to be going towards. CES4, explore expansion of missing middle housing opportunities within the mixed-use zone districts located between Hampton and Kenyon Avenues. That is this orange, primarily orange area that is residential. That includes today, a mix of single-family and small apartment buildings. And CES5, evaluate options for gentle infill housing units within residential transition zones, extending a quarter mile from the Broadway Bus Corridor and half mile from Inglewood Station. And that is primarily referring to this area just north of Floyd that is very walkable to Inglewood Station and the Broadway Bus Corridor, looking at potential infill opportunities in, through a gentle fashion. Moving on to Main Street, this is Broadway, the historical Main Street between Eastman and Kenyon. We have policy for the north side and the south side. The north side encourage expansion of the South Broadway Main Street Business Cluster area to the north of Floyd Avenue around the Gothic Theater. As you know, as this, oops, on the north end of this, where the Gothic is, is kind of where the downtown basically ends. And there's some opportunities there that, 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 the strip, the commercial retail core could be expanded to Eastman in this area. And then on the south side, this is probably not going to be, there, obviously, there's this highway interchange there that kind of separates these areas, but this might be a very good residential area to, just as this property was, to get customers to support downtown. Moving on to the Wellness District. CW1, work with hospitals to plan for expansion needs within the M1 and M2 Medical Zone Districts, as well as the MUB1 Central Business District, taking care to avoid hospital expansion into residential transition areas north of Gerard Avenue. So we want to keep hospitals, we want to allow hospitals to be able to grow, but we do not want, we do not want to see them expand into these yellow transition areas. CW3, continue support for missing middle housing opportunities within the existing MUR3C Zone District, which is right here between those two residential zone districts, as well as the R2B area south of Hampton Avenue. And finally, CW4, evaluate options for gentle infill housing units within residential transition zones, extending one quarter mile from the old Hampton Bus Corridor, primarily referring to these yellow areas here north of Gerard Avenue. Moving on to the northwest.
Mayor, would you like to pause after each sector to go through any questions on that? How did council, I was thinking that we can go to the end, but I could see it making sense for us to talk about, or bringing up questions or comments during each aspect, so. Is there anything? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
For the sake of efficiency, Mayor, may I suggest we do questions throughout, but don't weigh in with comments until the end, because I could see us getting stuck on an early one.
Okay. We can do that. So questions, any questions on, I'm fine with that. Anyone else want to weigh in? I think we covered a couple of them now. So any questions regarding the central, central or, or anything that's been presented at this point? Go ahead, Member Russell.
It's a little confusing to me, these CW1, CW3, and they're not marked on the map. Or am I missing something?
No, those, those are just the, how we'd, it's kind of like creating a chapter in a book in your, wanting to identify, give a certain kind of a code to that particular policy so you can refer to it without having to raid the whole thing. But there, those are not, those CW1, CW3, CW4 are not on these maps.
This is very confusing. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. I have a, so I actually do have a question because it's going to pertain to the rest of the sectors. So the way that I'm understanding this, so looking at this map, the bus corridor on Floyd and, what street is that going to be? Is that going to be, that's not Hampton. Just one block south of Hampton. So that one I understand because Hampton, Old Town, or Old Hampton is considered the bus corridor. But Logan, is that the eastern edge of Broadway?
Yes.
Okay. So when we're looking at the bus corridor for Logan, that is the easternmost point for the Broadway, for the quarter mile on, from Broadway?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question for now. I think I have more to ask once we get further onto this. All right. Thank you, John. I seen, go ahead, Member Russell.
So where is Broadway on that map?
Right here.
Thank you. That one's, oh, it's hard to see on these maps. All right. Thank you.
There's a lot of color and it's kind of throwing everything off, but, but I think, at least for this one, I think I got it. Go ahead, John. Sorry, Member Prang, go ahead.
Thank you. To add on to what the mayor asked about the bus corridor, in any area within the policy suggestions where it's giving a certain distance, for me, it would be helpful to have the boundaries of that distance laid out. I'm not.
So this blue line here is the quarter mile distance from the Broadway Corridor. And then these blue lines here are a quarter mile distance from the old Hampton Corridor, north and south. Does that make sense?
That's helpful right now in the moment, but I think for the public and for me to go back and look at this and fully digest it a little more deeply, having that explained somewhere would be incredibly helpful.
Thank you, Member Prang. Go ahead, John.
All right. Let's jump to the northwest sector. This sector includes the hill, or Goat Hill as, oops, as it is known, as well as industrial areas west of Santa Fe and also the Cushing Park area here as well. So starting with the hill, we have preserve and enhance industrial employment areas north of West Dartmouth Avenue, south of West Yale Avenue, east of South Tahone Street, and south of West Warren Avenue. And those are depicted primarily within those areas with the black lines on this map, except for this yellow portion here. And that is this next policy. Explore transitioning industrial properties located between the Northwest Greenbelt and West Yale Avenue to a mix of market and affordable single-family residential developments in a variety of formats. And this policy was identified in the existing analysis for the existing plan as a potential area that the city could enhance or, or build upon the Northwest Greenbelt and add some needed affordable housing area in this, in the, near the hill. And then moving on to this area near the river, between the river and Santa Fe, evaluate the existing conditions of mobile home park properties for the purpose of developing strategies to preserve, enhance, or replace deeply affordable housing units. And explore the potential for locating transitional housing for unhoused populations on underutilized portions of industrial lands located along South Platte River Drive. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission was, is basically aware that in this area, there are a number of mobile home properties that provide a lot of very deeply significant affordable housing for lower income populations. And they believe that it's important for the city to try to see how these could be preserved over time and made better. Then also, this, this other policy is, is similar to what's going on north of us in Denver. Denver at Isleth and Santa Fe, where the City of Denver is providing some transitional housing for unhoused populations temporarily. And this is something that you do not have to necessarily, this is not going to force you to do this, but is there in case you would like to have some kind of support later on. Uh, of course, you also can be feel free, feel, feel free to remove this policy if that is your discretion. And then moving on to Cushing Park.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, go ahead, Member Wright. So are, are we finishing northwest with that last slide?
Yes.
With Cushing Park? Can we finish that one slide and then we can get to your question, Member Wright?
Okay, so is this still part of-
This, that same sector, yeah.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, this is Cushing Park, uh, explore expansion of missing middle housing opportunities adjacent to the Broadway Commercial Corridor, as well as the Sand Creek Investors and W H Investors Plan Unit Developments. So what that's talking about is essentially, uh, looking at a coma street, uh, for, next to the Broadway Corridor as a potential, uh, missing middle area, as well as some of the industrial areas that line up along the recent PUDs that have been developed along Santa Fe. And that was the end of the northwest sector, so we will take-
Go ahead, Member Wright.
Question.
Right, and I apologize for that. So, my question is, up on the hill, are the industrial businesses leaving, or are we looking at wanting to get them to leave and transition into housing? Because there's a lot of industrial up there.
Yes. Uh, this would be something that the city would have to make a decision that they wanted to, yes, buy out those properties, to do that, if they, if that's what the city's decision was. But, uh, we do not have any evidence that anybody is thinking about leaving at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So John, I guess I have a question. So going back to that first slide where we're talking about just that one or two blocks of Yale, is that the area where the former school was at and where, um, I'm trying to think of the affordable housing?
Uh, yes, the former school site is about there. So that, no, this is, this is on the other side of the north, this is the Northwest Green Belt right there. And so, today, there are existing businesses here.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to picture it, I should have drew by the area. Okay, so this is not the former school site, I guess is the answer to my question. All right.
Correct.
Thank you. Go ahead, Member Russell.
That was part of my question. So we're going to go back and discuss these things after we do that. Um, okay, that, you asked the question I was going to ask, thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell, Member Noonkamp.
Just a quick clarification on the first slide of this section, this one. Can you help me understand, um, the distinction between preserving and enhancing industrial, and, sorry, the next one. Nope. Back, we were good. There it is. Um, preserving the industrial area and then taking just this one small section to explore transition? Can you clarify for me why that is the section that you're identifying as a possibility for transition? I missed that.
So the analysis the consultant did on the original comp plan, they looked at that, uh, asset, the Northwest Green Belt, and felt that was, that would be a great place to put that kind of housing next to some kind of community amenity like that.
Okay, thank you.
Member Prang, do you have a question?
Thank you. Um, so, right now, are we just asking clarifying questions?
Just clarifying question.
And then we're going to go back through with comments on things?
Correct.
I'm not sure which section of that. I have a few, a few comments slash questions that I'm not sure where to do it. I guess I will ask one question here on, um, N W dash W four with the mobile home parks. If this is existing, deep, affordable housing, why would we have the word "remove" anywhere involved in this particular policy? I can come back to further thoughts that I have on this, um, but-
I think it says "replace," not "remove."
Or "replace." So why, why would we have "replace" there? Why, why would we be having conversations about replacing any existing affordable housing when we're struggling so much to get to affordable housing in the city of Inglewood?
Good evening, Mayor. Members, Council Brad Power, Community Development Director. I think the "replace" would be to replace with like, types of units that would be in better condition, that would be able to house those deeply affordable residential users. So it's not, you know, knocking it down and building something completely different and forcing those people out. It's, the intention is to provide better conditions for them, over what's there now.
Okay, I'll make further comment on that later, because I, I don't-
Can I speak to that?
Go ahead, Mayor Protem. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Member Prang, did you have anything else, or? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I thought maybe I could add a little, a little color to this, since we've been doing Neighborhood Rehab Project for a number of years in the city. These, how, a lot of these housing units are, um, in, some of them in nearly unlivable condition, and I think the, the, you know, what I would want to see in here is some kind of charity program to help them fix up, fix up these units, not, you know, maybe, maybe replacing them altogether, but they're, they're deeply affordable, partly because they're, um, they're, some of them are even, even unsafe. I've been in, I've been in some of these units, and they're in, they're in rough condition, and would be great to see it maintained. I think we need, you know, need mobile homes, this type of, this type of housing in the city, but to, you know, use, maybe even use, see, you know, community development block grant funds or something like that, to, to see these projects fixed up to where they're more livable, I think would be a big value, without increasing the price or something like that.
Member Russell, and then Member Wright, yeah.
Thank you. Are these properties owner-occupied currently?
The majority of them are not. I believe there is one that is, that the association does have control over, but the others are owned by landlords.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Member Wright.
Thank you. I, I, that was my question, so I guess I would clarify, my clarifying question, are the mobile homes owned by the people and then they rent the space, would be my question.
I believe that is the majority situation. However, there probably are a few of the, uh, mobile homes that are rented as well as the lot, too. That, that's probably the case as well.
Okay, so I, I, I know there's further discussion, but I like where Mayor Protem was going with this, where I know we have different programs that City Manager was talking about regarding my question last week, and this would warrant further discussion after we're done here. Thank you.
All right. Uh, sorry, go ahead, Member Prang.
Sorry, not to belabor this section. Um, I did have one other question. So, in N W dash W two, so I think back a slide, um, i- in our goal of getting more concrete and less conceptual, um, I, I, I'm not of a huge fan of a mix of market and affordable housing language that's in this particular piece. I think if we're going to get concrete and not conceptual, let's define that a little bit better. Uh, maybe we have some percentages that could come into play there, and maybe that conversation occurs after we do some more decision-making around an affordable housing goal, because I think this just leaves it up for interpretation. Oh, we can have a mix of market price and affordable housing in here, but if the first developers that come in are all wanting to do market price, then where do we get affordable housing?
I think that's it for this sector. Go ahead, John.
Okay, let's move on to the northeast. A little bit simpler here. You will see a very familiar pattern, uh, based on that quarter-mile, uh, area. So, uh, again, explore expansion of missing middle housing opportunities adjacent to the Broadway Commercial Corridor. That's primarily here on Lincoln. And then farther to the east, evaluate options for gentle infill housing units within the residential transition zones, and additional areas extending one quarter mile from the Broadway Bus Corridor, and, uh, that is marked there in that blue line. Would anyone want to ask any questions about northeast?
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. So, currently, the missing middle that you're talking about, that yellow section there?
Orange.
Oh, the orange is where you're going to put the missing middle?
That, yes. Orange, orange is missing middle.
And what is the yellow section?
Well, it's yellow to me, but, uh, okay, I'll point it out again. So, uh, red is the Cadillac area on Broadway, and then next to that is the, uh, missing middle area that's orange, uh, with, that would have those duplex to small multifamily, and then, then the yellow is the transitional residential area with the gentle infill.
Okay, so, define missing middle for me.
So that ranges typically from, uh, a two-unit property all the way up to, tend to be something like twelve to sixteen units. A small, a small apartment building that we, you would see in Inglewood, near the medical district, that would be like, maybe twelve, sixteen units.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this? If not, let's move to the, oh, sorry, go ahead, Member Wright.
I'm sorry, I need more clarification also. In the orange, what would currently be there now that missing middle could go up?
Um, could you be a more-
What would be replaced with missing middle that is currently there?
What could you do today with existing zoning?
No, what would be standing?
What is there now today?
Yes.
Uh, typically, there'd be, uh, small, older homes, uh, potentially, there'd be also duplexes and triplexes. There's, we've had a lot of, uh, infill development already there, typically town homes.
So there's current housing in a lot of these areas already that are considered starter homes for a lot of people then?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Member Russell, did you have another question? No? Okay. All right, I think we're good with this sector. Go ahead, John.
Uh, near s- nope. Yeah. Near south, uh, the near south area, uh, has Oxford Station, as well as the Broadway Corridor is, is primarily the focus. Uh, with the Oxford Station area, integrate a wide variety of mixed land uses, including neighborhood serving retail and housing opportunities, as well as creative industrial flex and startup space within the existing industrial framework of the Oxford Light Rail Transit Station. And then, uh, this N S one should have been taken off of this one, that was for the previous slide. Uh, for the Broadway Corridor, you'll see the same pattern. Explore expansion of missing middle housing opportunities adjacent to the South Broadway Commercial Corridor. And then farther away from the corridor, evaluate options for gentle infill housing units within the residential transition zones extending one quarter mile from the Broadway Bus Corridor. Any questions on that?
Any questions from council? Don't seem mu- much different than the northern part of Broadway there, so, all right?
Yeah, it, it kind of gives, comes a broken record after.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, John.
Uh, far south, uh, same kind of pattern there. Um, explore expansion of missing middle housing opportunities along the Broadway Commercial Corridor, and evaluate options for infill development within a quarter mile of the Broadway Any questions there?
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Um, so my question on the, um, the far south, currently, these areas are residential housing, correct? The, the, where the, where we would put the missing middle, or the transitional areas, is that currently housing?
Yes, it is.
And, and what is, remind me what the yellow is?
That is residential transition zone, uh, which would be, is a single, typically single-family attached or detached areas.
Okay, so I guess my question is, and this would apply to all of these, um, if these houses are single-family privately-owned properties, is the city going to take this land away from them, or are we just making policies that if somebody wanted to come in there, they could build something different?
I believe, I would say that these, you're looking to use these policies to inform your zoning, uh, change decisions, and quite frankly, you don't have to make those decisions as well. You could just have this in your plan for twenty years and not make any decisions if you, if council didn't see fit to do so. Uh, but yes, that is, the intentionist is to inform your zoning decisions, which would then give more opportunities to either current landowners to do what they, what they felt was, made sense to them, or potential buyers of these properties.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I see no further questions. Go ahead, Member Prang.
In F S two, when you state adjacent to the Broadway Commercial Corridor, is that the quarter mile that you're speaking of in an F S three? What does adjacent mean in F S two?
Uh, so, adjacent means, uh, so there is a, a pattern that, uh, these things, that the, the existing zoning takes, and so there is the Commercial Corridor, and then adjacent means directly adjacent, that this would be an area that you might consider, uh, as being missile, missing middle opportunity areas. Um, that's, but that's not-
So, so does that have a certain distance, or what? I, I get what adjacent means.
Yeah, so we, we cannot, at this point, we're not in the, we do not have the ability to define these, we would, it would take us, uh, this, this process would go on for a couple of years before we would be able to do that. And so, we're just conf, putting, setting up the parameters at this point. It's going to take a lot more study to determine what those boundaries are.
Okay, thank you.
So John, just a clarifying question for tonight. So tonight, we're really, i- if there's anything that gives us pause, or anything that we say, may we, that we may want to expand at some, you know, within what we're seeing tonight, that's what you're looking for tonight. We're going to get deeper into the weeds as we move forward over the course of the next year or two, however long this project's going to take. Tonight, you're just asking, are we uncomfortable with any aspect of this, or were you actually wanting to increase the missing middle to a bigger portion of the city, potentially? Is that what you're looking for from us tonight?
Yes, I am. Uh, so we asked, are you comfortable with these policies? Uh, if there's something that does give you heartburn, it would be great to hear specifically what that is, uh, and we would try to, uh, massage these a bit. But, uh, yes, these are, this is setting you up for going forward in the future, looking at your TOC areas, at, as, well as potential smaller area planning projects that you want to do.
Okay, perfect. Uh, thanks for that clarification, because I'm getting the sense that we may be going along in this item, and we do have members from the boards that are going to speak on the second item that we have for tonight, but I think for tonight, let's just not get too deep in the weeds, but if there is something that brings us pause or concern, let's definitely bring it up tonight. Um, I think it was Mayor Protem, and then Member Noonkamp, and then Member Russell. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that gives me pause here is, uh, I don't see enough missing, you know, I know the missing middle is the one thing that we have missing, and I, I don't see much change in terms of the boundaries. You know, we know this, along the Broadway Corridor is where the biggest need for, uh, that missing middle housing is. It gives it great access to transportation, to, you know, bike lanes, when the Sherman Bike Lane is, is done especially, and, um, and I'm not seeing a lot of, I do see little changes here and there, but I would like to see that yellow expanded out, probably another two blocks, I think, to allow for just increased missing middle housing all along the corridor.
Member Noonkamp?
I don't disagree with what the Mayor Protem just said, and from what I've heard tonight, knowing that everything is worded as we're going to explore and we are going to evaluate, I have nothing that causes me concern. There are some things that I have questions about and feasibility, and, um, I know we'll get to some of those later questions, but I'm fine moving forward with this, as is tonight. Thank you.
Member Russell.
I would like to ex- I would like to expand a little bit on your question and what you said. As far as I saw, the, the calendar here for moving forward, we are, you are moving forward with this. If we don't put a stop to some of these things tonight, it will not come back to us. Is that correct?
Well, here. We want to update the comprehensive plan based on the schedule that you're comfortable with. So based on your direction on these proposed policies, if there are things that we have to evaluate in additional detail and take the time to do that, we'll do so. I think one of the things around this endeavor is to try to get the city in the position by the end of 2026 to give the state the transitory and a community housing opportunity goal that is now required of every city in the front range to provide. And that is some of the issues, that's some of the reasons why we're delineating these opportunity areas the way we are. If we need to expend the time to go through that on a more in-depth basis with the council, we, we would await your direction on that, we would do so.
I appreciate that, because I saw the next thing on the agenda is the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing. So whatever we don't deal with tonight, and I think that brings up another point, that is even probably very few municipalities in this state are moving forward with state-mandated laws, except for Inglewood. And I think this council has a decision to make. We don't have to do what the state mandates. Everybody else is fighting it. We could at least wait till they get done fighting it, if we don't want to join the fight. So, thank you, I appreciate that. But I do want us to deal with this if we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Wright and then Member Ward.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, as some of you may see from my tabs. Some of us weren't even on council when this started. I think it was 2016 or 2017, and it's pushed through tonight pretty quick. I would like more time, I would like time for questions. It says, just what was presented tonight, August 4th of this year, City Council Public Hearing. I believe it's the same night that we're presented for the budget, for us to vote on the budget, so it's going to be a big night. If anything, I'd like to pump the brakes on this, because I do have a lot of questions about the whole thing in general. Kathleen Bailey sent an email that was very pointed. I don't know if everybody read it, but one thing that I took note of what she said in it is, in the SAMs, PUD area, if we make decisions, there's potentially 2,000 homes that could be impacted on this and changed into multifamilies. Those are 2,000 starter homes. I do believe what she said, that she spent a lot of time on this. She sat down with staff, she discussed this, she mapped it out. So how many other areas could be impacted on multifamily homes that could be starter homes? So I would like to have more discussion on this, be it another study session where it's not crammed with multiple big items that we need to discuss. Like I said, there's some of us that weren't here when this started, and I don't want it to be rushed, making decisions that could impact generations of people that will be living in Inglewood when some of us may not be here in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wright. Go ahead, Member Ward.
I think there are a couple of things that give me a little bit of pause. I'll start with the one that drew my attention first, and that's some of the industrial transition areas, primarily the ones directly south of, of where we're sitting now. A couple of years ago, we did a chamber tour in that area, and there are a lot of thriving industrial businesses that are long established in Inglewood. And what concerns me is the message that we would be sending to them if we target that area for some sort of redevelopment or rezoning. It's almost like saying, well, thanks for all the bananas, but we're moving in a different direction. And I don't want to be giving that message to our business owners in industrial areas who have invested heavily in the city, have found a place where they can do business that's centrally located, have employees, and have well-established operating businesses. So that would be my first one. The second one was similarly identified by Councilwoman Wright. The people who live adjacent to the industrial areas in District 4, south of Oxford and along that Santa Fe Corridor, are already experiencing a significant amount of heartburn about the change there. And I'm not sure that now is an appropriate time for us to signal additional change in that area. So that would be one area that I would want to examine as possibly being targeted for more stability at the current time, as opposed to additional change. And then the, the last thing I'll leave with is, sometimes on these land use discussions, it gets a little confusing to me. And admittedly, land use is not one of my strong points as a council member, but we're talking about a vision for what we want overall and how we want the city to develop, but we've just gone through a comprehensive update of our land use code, and much of this would require us to make additional zoning changes in the future. And so I'm wondering if we're, again, I'm sensitive to the question of if we're moving too fast. There's a lot of change happening in the city currently, organically, but now we're sort of sending the message that we intend to drive additional change, which is moving in a somewhat different direction from what we previously did when we passed code next. So those are, those are a few of my just philosophical concerns and some direct policy-related concerns relative to this.
Thank you, Member Ward. Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp. Actually, yeah, go ahead, Member.
I can defer to Member Prang, I've already spoken.
Go ahead, Member Prang.
Thank you. It gives me heartburn to approve policy that is not, in my opinion, in some areas accomplishing the goal of getting more concrete versus conceptual. So I had a few areas of, you know, asking for what the definition or the distance were. I, I'm, I really struggle with the concept of, I know that we want to be big picture and, and keep things moving forward, but without things being better defined, I, I think that that gives me pause, and I'm pretty positive it'll give a lot of residents of the city pause. So, and going back to the response that Mayor Protem gave about the mobile home areas, I think that's a good example of somewhere where I understand the explanation that was given and maybe the replacing means that we're, you know, revamping and, and not increasing the cost for people. So let's say that. Because the way that I read it in here is that there's potential for us to replace, like grab those land parcels and do something else with it. And I will continue to fight that that is existing affordable housing. There are lots of families that live in those areas and have lived in those areas for years that send kids to our schools. And not all of those areas are, how it's kind of been portrayed tonight, that they're kind of trashy areas. I have been into, one at least, of these mobile home parks that are very cleanly and well-maintained, and, and they are a home, you know, owned, they are homes that are owned by the people that live there. So I just really want to be careful that if we're intending something different with the word like replace we put in, you know, at no additional cost to existing homeowners that live in the area, let's get, if we're going to say we're going to get more concrete, let's actually get more concrete with some of our language and define it a little bit better, so that everybody can feel more comfortable advocating for and defending our decisions around moving these policies forward. I'm trying to think if there is anything, oh, I did have one other question or ask pertaining to this conversation tonight, but I think in any conversation that we have around housing in the city, I think it would be really helpful for me to have some kind of, like infographic, if you will, that gives us some basic data about the city. Like what are the demographics that live in the city? What is the percentage of housing, existing housing breakdown that we have from single families to multifamily units, et cetera? And what was the other thing that I thought would be helpful in that? Sorry, I apologize. Oh, and numbers of persons and households. So when I was trying to read a little bit more about missing middle housing and, and some of the kind of statistics that are out there around that, can we have some data for Inglewood? Like how many single-person homes do we have in Inglewood? And what does that look like in comparison to the percentages of our housing breakdown for existing housing? So that as we're having the discussion about moving forward and developing more housing, we're doing it in a really educated way, and I have most current US Census-like data or whatever we can get in that, so that every time I'm talking about housing, I can go right back to those statistics and know, as I'm doing my reading or as we're having the conversation, does this proposal make sense? Thank you.
Member Noonan Camp?
Sure, just a couple of things from comments from my colleagues tonight. I think, Member Prang, a lot of that also is in the Housing and Affordability Assessment. So I think your idea around having like a fact sheet, a one-pager of all of that data, I think could be a great idea. Just also to be clear on the, the area just west of Santa Fe around this whole replace units, the, the policy, as I read it, looking here, it says actually to preserve those units, enhance them, and replace the deeply affordable ones. So I do, I doesn't think it means we're going to replace everything. I think some is like, no, how do we preserve the ones that are safe and good? How do we enhance them and make them better? And then how do we replace some of them? So I actually don't think the policy just says replace for, for what it's worth. And then, Member Ward, on the industrial piece, one thing that I think is a really important distinction, because I was on that same chamber tour in, visiting some of our businesses in the industrial area, is that it's only between Hampton and Kenyon. And actually, the business that we visited on that tour is south of Kenyon, and so it would not be impacted. And I actually think that this, I think if we were to say, let's get rid of our zoning district, or again, explore getting rid of our zoning district completely, that would be moving really quickly and setting a really strong sign. This is like two blocks that we're saying, hey, there's been a lot of PUD activity, most of this is not industrial, should we consider a shift here? And that actually makes a lot of good sense for me as we think about that kind of Hampton Corridor. So I just wanted to note that for clarification.
Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually agree with the things that Councilmember Ward shared. And I think another thing that we need to consider is that during COVID, it was really the industrial areas that saved this city financially. We don't have a whole lot of retail area and a lot more of retail areas being changed to residential, like the Kimco Project. And actually, industrial area is even far more lucrative than retail, because it provides for the city in three different ways. People work here, or people come here to work, they're producing something, and then they do frequent businesses here also. But I also think that there is a huge paradigm shift that's about ready to happen, and I think a lot of industry, industry is coming back to America. And if we're, if we get rid of all of our industrial area, we wouldn't be positioned in a way that we could take advantage of that. And that would bring revenue into the city, and that is our, one of our big struggles right now. So I would like to see us protect the industrial areas. The other thing, when I was reading about Denver providing affordable housing in that same area where Inglewood is, it was just a reminder to me that Denver is a city of 153 square miles, almost 154 square miles. They have more land than we do in Inglewood. We have six and a half square mile. We are already the densest city probably in the state. And I think that we need to be careful with changing our zoning and think it through a lot before we just start making changes. And I do agree with Councilmember Ward on this also, that we've already made a lot of changes, that we haven't seen the results of that. And then adding more change on top of that could exponentially create bigger problems if we don't wait to see what's going to happen from what we've already done. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Russell. John, I, I know that we're going through, I think there's like another slide or two that we need to go to, but I think we kind of got in the gist of what the next slides are going to show. So I think just getting questions, comments regarding what we've seen so far, and I could just jump in. Actually, Brad, did you want to say something before I went?
Well, Mayor, I wanted, I know Brian wants to make a point, but I also have a suggestion, possibly, at the conclusion for next steps.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
One thing I thought might be helpful, especially for next time, is to see these policies paired with what their potential strategies, to me, those policies would be. I think it might help Councilmember Prang in understanding where we're coming from, to see the policy and how our staff would work on there. Not to say that these policies would say the comprehensive plan is really painting our picture from a 30,000-foot view in very broad strokes, which is very tough to do, because even in such a small city, we have just a huge range of businesses, residential, all these different things. What a lot of the policy strategies look at are providing staff opportunities to go in and study some of these areas in much more detail, say, around our transit stations along Broadway, to provide better, you know, better study, better, better policy guidance for council moving down the road as we look at TOC and other items in the future. So I, I wanted to make that point, and that a lot of this policy is just, it's really guiding towards us and not making concrete decisions today that might say that we're going to rezone these areas or do these things. It's saying, give staff the opportunity to look at whether we go through these things or not, or to say, don't touch it, staff, stay away from that. That's really where we're coming from with these policies. I, I understand wanting to get, you know, some measurements to understand better. And I think we can do that in certain areas, but there's certain areas that are just so inflexed right now that it's really difficult for us to define it, because if we define it too small, we can't really expand. Or if we define it too large, it may take up more area than we really intended it to. So the comp plan to us, we generally write it in a somewhat abstract way to help give us flexibility to bring you the items that we bring you in the future. Some items are easy. I think in the 2017 comprehensive plan, it said, look at your development code and redo it. That's really easy, that's really concrete, that's really easy for us to pull that one out. In some of these areas, it's really difficult, especially because the TOC conversation is still so ongoing. Where we stand on state legislation is so ongoing, it's hard for us to make these really concrete lines in the sand and draw them right now. So what we're saying is, here's where the boundaries are for those projects, or those thoughts, or those ideas, and here's how we, where we can work in between. And then the strategies that we'll present at the next meeting, we'll really go into more detail of how we would do that, but to still not define it, you know, very concrete, just more concrete than we have in the past. That's a very abstract way of explaining all of that, but.
Thank you, Brian. Go ahead, Brett.
Just to follow up on that, when I arrived in 2016, the comp plan itself was under the final throes of being finalized and adopted. And Councilmember Russell will remember that that was a very protracted process. It involved a lot of council discussion. And so what I think we'll do next time is try to regroup around some of the concrete things that we can bring before you. And I would again suggest that at the end of that conversation, you want additional analysis and additional conversation around these types of changes. We're here to do that, and we pledge to do that with you. So we adopted a very aggressive timeline on this in discussion with you earlier. And if the complexities of some of the things that are coming down the road that you want to review with us in further depth, again, we'll pledge to do that with you on a timeline that makes sense. But Brian is absolutely right. Our comp plan is specifically adopted by resolution and not ordinance. And again, that's to convey the context to everyone in the community that this is not hard and fast law. This is a guideline document that's intended to generally establish the course of the development direction of the physical development of the city over the next 20 to 25 years. The concrete elements of that are in those zoning changes, are in the code updates, are in the small area plans that you and subsequent councils may direct in the future that would guide the specific development around other portions of town. We're not here to debate with you around the, the state legislation. We, we are acting as if we will at some point go forward with that, and that's how we kind of contextualize the analysis that we've done up until this point, relative to what those requirements may look like and where we may be able to meet them in the parts of town that we may be required to meet them. So with that, I think we are prepared to move on tonight, regroup and come back to you with a different part of, another part of this, maybe a different context for conversation, and we'll. And we'll see where that leaves in terms of our schedule longer term.
Thank you, Brad. Yeah, it definitely sounds from the group that they want to have another discussion. So yeah, setting up another discussion regarding this item makes a lot of sense to me. Is there anything else that council wants to add tonight regarding just anything they saw within the documents? I could just, I could just reiterate what I heard tonight, or I, I'll reiterate what I heard in terms of what gives me pause. I think just the industrial areas, I think it is a little bit too much for my liking. Similar to the reason why Member Russell stated, is like during COVID, they were bringing a lot of the sales tax revenue for the city, and they still do. So I think without knowing exactly, without knowing that there's a vacancy rate issue or something along those lines, I don't really want to replace the industrial areas unless something like that is occurring within the city. And then I do agree with the point that Mayor Protem brought up about the missing middle. I would like to see that become a little bit bigger without really going through code changes to, to make that a reality. So I want to stay within the current zoning scope in order to kind of fix that missing middle. So those are just my comments. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I'll just speak to, I think for, for me on the missing middle thing, the idea would be to set a long-term vision that may some, you know, someday down the road include, include code changes, though not, not triggering any immediate action or anything would be, would be my approach.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, good point. Anything else from members of council? Go ahead, Member Wright.
With this, since we're looking at stuff, can we see how many current, recent and upcoming units are being built with this so we could get a vision of currently what's going on in the city? Please.
Current development? Member Wright, is that what, okay.
There is a lot of development. I mean, we've done tours recently, and then lots being built with Kimco and then Sams, and then the Arden just had ribbon cutting and they're feeling. So I want to make sure that we're not overdeveloping at the same time. So it's kind of my thought.
Do you have a timeframe you'd like us to look at and what all, you want us to do single-family all the way up, or are we looking just multifamily?
Actually, if you're able to do that, I would say just permitting within the last year and then coming up since the PUDs have been approved, please.
All right. Anything else from members of council? All right, Brad, well, Brad, Brian, is, Brad, is there anything else you want to add, or?
I was just going to say thank you for your comments and for the extra time.
Yep. Brad, John, Brian, thank you very much for your time tonight. We'll continue the discussion here in the near future. Appreciate all the work that went into this, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to Agenda Item Two. So we have Finance Director Kevin Ingles, Budget and Financial Analyst Tyson Thornburg here to present an overview of the 2026 to 2030 capital projects list. We have members for planning and zoning, as well as the Budget Advisory Committee in attendance from, in attendance within the crowd at the moment. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council, good evening, Inglewood community. I'm Jenny Nolan, Budget Manager and Tyson Thornburg, Budget and Financial Analyst, and I will help guide you through the slides this evening, along with the directors who are here to discuss their Tier One capital projects with you. But before we get into this, I wanted to also mention that we've got members of our staff, Capital Review Committee here in the room, as well as online listening. They are tasked to provide a prioritized recommendation to the city manager and city council of the capital projects. So these are the one-time items. So they're looking at just a subset of the capital requests this evening. So tonight, we're going to be looking at the preliminary capital improvement plan. It's for the five-year period 2026 through 2030. And the flow of our discussion will be by fund. And as I mentioned, our department directors are here to discuss their Tier One capital requests. If you would like them to discuss any of the other capital requests that are listed, please ask during the question and answer period. And we, so yes, we will have a question and answer period. And at the very end, I will come back and review the prioritization tool with you. It's the Excel workbook, same format, same criteria that we used last year. Just wanted to review it with the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Budget Advisory Committee, as well as our Capital Review Committee. And with that, I'll turn over the presentation to Tyson, and he'll guide us through the next section of our presentation.
Tyson, before you get started, and Jenny, just a clarification, at least for me, the majority of the discussion is going to be focused on the PIF and the capital projects, correct?
That's correct.
Because I know that the open space and conservancy, some of those other fronts are in there as well, but those are, we're going to go through quickly, but it's the PIF and the capital projects that we are going to focus on. All right, perfect. Yes. All right, perfect. Go ahead, Tyson.
Thank you. So this first slide shows our 2026 City Council Budget Calendar. So after this evening, our next touch point with you all will be on June 23 with our preliminary Department 2026 Operating and Capital Requests presentation. This slide gives a brief overview of our 2026 CIP process. So so far, departments have met with their respective boards, commissions, and committees to solicit feedback on their prioritized list for their capital projects. And then the next two slides list out the boards, commissions, and committees that have provided feedback or will provide feedback on our capital budgets. And then this slide lists all the funds that have capital budget requests organized by And then each of our capital requests are categorized as either projects or programs with their respective definitions up there. And then each capital project or program is also given a tier priority of one, two, three, or four with those definitions listed. And then each capital project or program request also supports one or more of the Inglewood Vision Results and Outcomes. And this slide shows the support for each outcome listed by all requests and then also broken out by Tier One projects. And so to kick us off, we're going to have Parks, Recreation, Library, and Golf Director Christina Underhill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Christina Underhill, Director of Parks, Rec, Library, and Golf. We'll be covering the Conservation Trust, Open Space, and Golf Course Fund, and we've added a new Fund 35, which is Parks, Rec, GeoBond for our construction projects. So I'll go over these quickly. The state lottery, we do get funds from that annually between $400,000 and $500,000. If we don't use the funds, it just keeps rolling year after year, so we do budget these for larger projects potentially at our rec centers in Pirate's Cove. So the Tier One, granted, we do use many of these throughout the year, but Tier One is Pirate Cove Maintenance. We have a handful of different items needing to be addressed, from the slides to the boiler to the hair and lint strainer that is very important in our water park. So Tier One is $70,000 for this, this next year. The next one is our Open Space Fund. We get just over $1 million from Arapahoe County from the indefinite quarter cent sales tax, and that goes back into our parks and open space. We have a handful of items on here for Tier One grant matching, irrigation system replacement, park planning design, the flowerbed program and maintenance. We do get some funds for employees, and so we do fund, position and the half out of open space for our Parks Division, and then also tree replacement throughout the system And then the golf course funds, again, this is an enterprise fund, so any revenue they do not utilize can go into capital and debt services. So asphalt golf clubs, or excuse me, golf carts, clubhouse improvements, maintenance and operating equipment, as well as a variety of other course improvements are budgeted annually. This year, we are addressing the pump station, asphalt, and the golf carts. And next year, we'll continue to do the same thing. And then for our GeoBond, again, it's Fund 35. This is a new fund coming in. The bond sale is potentially happening this Wednesday. Once the funds come in, we'll be able to hit the ground running with projects. So here's the ballot language for ballot issue two C. Passed by a narrow margin there. We're addressing eight parks and two facilities, and this is the current layout for, on the parks and facilities year after year. This is going to move a little bit as we get into further design and then construction as well. So we have the 41.5 to spend down over three years, so it'd be in 2028, we hope to be wrapping most everything up. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Member Ward, go ahead.
This is a relatively small item, but regarding flowerbeds, I know that we'd had a previous discussion about switching from, what is it, annuals to perennials, but I see that number has remained the same year over year. Have we executed that? And why would the cost remain the same if we had?
So, good question, thank you for that question. We do budget the 41, it's not always spent. We do have a contractor that maintains some of the flowerbeds in addition to the volunteer flowerbed program. We are still putting annuals in our flowerbeds. We did order some for this year, and they'll go in in May timeframe. We are ordering perennials as well. And so we're slowly doing the transition to allow a lot of colors still to be in our flowerbeds throughout our park system, but also perennials are starting to enter those flowerbeds as well. So we may see that decrease over time as we don't need to purchase as many flowers.
Thank you. Also, if there's anyone from Budget Advisory Committee or P&amp;Z that want to come up and ask a question, I guess we can just have you sit in Tyson's seat. And Andrina, do we have anyone online? Just one person from Budget Advisory. If they ask a question, just let me know, because I don't see it. All right, perfect.
Member Russell.
Actually, I think my question probably goes in a different part. The golf carts are going to be a little later.
The golf carts are now, so those are something that it's, we've purchased, and so it's an annual payment for the golf carts.
Okay, so it, but it says lease. Is that like, is it financing them or is it actually leasing them? But we're responsible for maintaining them, correct?
Correct, it's financing, so we'll own at the end after 2028.
Okay, so after 2028, do we know what the battery life is on those?
That's a good question. It's over 10 years, I believe.
Okay, that, that'll be great if that's true.
Golf court batteries are a little different than cars.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Preng.
Thank you for the presentation. I just had a quick question around the tree replacement.
Yes.
Is that to replace aging trees, trees that we've taken out, or to increase slash maintain tree cover throughout the city? What is that for?
Good question, and all of the above. So if we remove a tree, we typically replace with two or three trees. Any of the projects in our parks that are going on currently and will be happening, we'll be replacing quite a few. So if we remove one tree, Ritala's a good example, I think we're putting in over 20 trees all said and done with that project. So ultimately, the goal is to replace more trees than we ever remove and to continue to address tree maintenance with, you know, the emerald ash border treatment that we do annually in our trees and ensure our tree canopy continues to grow, not decrease.
Okay, very helpful, thank you.
All right. Any other further questions on this section? All right, thank you very much, Christina.
Thank you.
All righty, back to me. Our Public Improvement and Capital Projects Fund is, are the two capital projects funds, as Mayor alluded to, that we have limited funding, but of course, an abundance of requests. And for 2026, that's, that hasn't changed. And you'll notice that the majority of our requests are of programs related versus project related. So programs are more ongoing costs, more maintenance of, of maintaining capital assets. So this slide, it's a little hard to read, but it just kind of, it just displays all of the capital requests by tier and whether it's by project or program. And you can also see the department level as well. So in 2026, our Tier One capital requests total about $8.7 million, and the current funding available is about $4 million, which is our ongoing funding from our vehicle use and building or construction use tax and Arapahoe County Road and Bridge Tax. And this year, we've been made aware of a new development, and that should yield about $3 million. So for 2027, or 2026, we have about $7 million of funding available. However, our request is almost $9 million, so we'll need either to find additional funding or reduce our capital requests. Last week, Mayor Wright had made a question, or had a question regarding the beginning fund balance of our Public Improvement Fund and Capital Projects Fund. And notice it was a large dollar amount. But a portion of that fund balance is designated for current projects that have not been completed. So it's been budget appropriations that have been authorized in the past that we just have not completed the project. So of the 19 million, we have about almost 13.4 million of projects that need, and programs that need to spend down. And so we have unappropriated fund balance of about $1,007,000 that could be appropriated. So our next department up will be Communications and Director Chris Hargath, along with some of his staff members, I believe, are here to discuss their Tier One projects.
Thank you, council. Vanessa Davis, Marketing Manager in the Communications Department. Our public art for wraps and crosswalks, this has been a program that has been in place for many years now at this point. In the last year, we have funded 13 with 10 of them installed, and three are waiting to be installed once we have the correct weather for those. We would like to continue this project and make it more equitable to ensure that the wraps and crosswalks are throughout the entire community.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Here to talk about, just a quick update on the Wayfinding and Placemaking Program. To date, we've installed two primary gateways, 16 secondary gateways, and seven community message signs. Our focus this year is bridge gateway art that was identified in the Wayfinding and Placemaking Master Plan. Other opportunities for pedestrian wayfinding, vehicular wayfinding, and additional community message signs.
All right. Any questions for Communications? Go ahead, Member Wright.
Thank you. I just had one question. It's listed as a Tier Two, but it's with all of the Tier Ones. What is the public art acquisitions? Because it's just kind of in there, so I didn't know if it was a mistake or?
We're going to ask Director Underhill to take this one.
Thank you.
That's a good question. Councilmember Wright, so that was one we put in a few years back to request additional funds to do more public art. We get a lot of requests through the CAC, the Cultural Arts Commission, and through the city. And so we put a request in, but it is a Tier Two, you're correct. So technically, it's not fully funded.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Member Russell.
Thank you. So is the public art wraps and crosswalks, is that part of the, what is it, 1% of the general fund that goes for art, or does that go someplace else?
That goes someplace else. That is, I believe, on the next slide, that we will be talking about the art in public spaces, 1%.
Okay, I appreciate that. And how many, I mean, we're putting in neighborhood entryway signs, how many, how many of those are we doing for each neighborhood, and how much do they cost?
So I'm happy to do that. Now, that's a future slide also, but I'm happy to take that now if.
No, wait, I don't care. You want to go ahead and do it?
Mayor, take it now?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay, sure, yeah.
So that's into the Capital Projects Fund, Fund 31. Okay.
Yeah, so, so far, we've done Bellevue Park, Hampton Hills, and Cushing Park. Old Town is going to be installed either this week or next week. It's in the final stages of manufacturing. We have applications in progress from Duncan Park, the Sherrilyn Neighborhood, and Mansfield Heights. Each, so they get, so each neighborhood.
Each, so they get, so each neighborhood. Two signs.
One in one corner and another on another corner?
Yeah, and we work with the neighbors to determine where to, you know, where's the most appropriate place to put those signs. And Public Works, of course, those need to be in our right of way. So it's ten thousand for each neighborhood. That includes two neighborhood signs and twelve toppers. Those are the little signs that you see on top of the street signs that indicate the boundaries of the neighborhood.
Can I ask a question? You may not know the answer. Have we already replaced the street signs, all the street signs? Or are there still street signs out there that have the old logo?
So my understanding is that most, if not all of them, have been replaced. And if you see some that have not been replaced, please let us know. Because that is one of the goals, not of this program. But I do know that Public Works has been working to replace all of those signs.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, you bet.
All right. Any other questions for Communications? All right. Vanessa, Chris, thank you so much.
Director Christina Underhill is here to talk about the Parks, Rec, Library, and Golf Public Improvement Fund Tier One projects.
All right, so we have three items on here. We've got the Parks and Rec Parking Lot Maintenance, Little Dry Creek at the Plaza, and then the Broadway Medians. The parking lot maintenance is an annual program that we update our variety of parking lots that we have. Some are in more need than others. And so we try to either, one, restripe them if the lines are going away or fill potholes or whatever it may be before we do a whole refresh. The Malle Parking Lot, it's around ninety five thousand dollars to get that done. So we do have some funds and some help with streets to complete that project. The Little Dry Creek at the Plaza, we have just about one point two million, just a little under that, to complete renovations there. That is in partnership with the EDDA. And they'll be also splitting the cost with us as well for those improvements. Currently, it's in design. And myself, as well as the EDDA and our consultants, will be at a variety of special events throughout the summer getting feedback about the Plaza. And then the last one on there for Parks, Rec, Library, and Golf is the Broadway Medians. South Broadway has been designed. In fact, we are starting some renovations of those medians here in May. So you'll see some new plants going in as well as some new art on the medians themselves to bring some color to South Broadway.
Christina, a couple of questions for me. Any contingencies with Mile High Flood District regarding the Plaza?
So Mile High actually did phase one, which we thought the city, Parks and Rec, thought we were paying for that, and we ended up not. And so that's the funding that we have to do phase two and possibly a phase three. And so we will work with Mile High to ensure that there's no conflict with the actual floodway compared to what could be considered recreational up top.
Okay, and Broadway Medians is south, South Broadway, south of Hampton?
Correct. Yes.
Perfect. All right. Any further questions for Christina? All right. Christina, thank you so much. We got Victor. Sorry, Jenny, I'm doing your job. Go ahead, Jenny.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Victor Rochelle, Director of Public Works. We're going to go over lines seven through fourteen here and then on to the next page. These are our tier one programs that you see on the list. So up first is our ongoing alley maintenance, followed by bridge repairs. You will notice that the bridge repairs is slightly higher. We are due to update our biannual report, which is why that is increased this year. And then concrete accessible ramps. We replace those in coordination with the next line item, which is the concrete utility city share. That's replacing broken curb and gutter, broken sidewalk, and things of that nature within the city. Item eleven, the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. While this is an ongoing program, the project to develop that will be going out to RFP here shortly. And then we'll be dipping into these funds once the program is fully established. Next is pavement maintenance by area. That's our ongoing regular pavement maintenance program. And road and bridge materials, that's the materials our crews use in-house on a regular basis, whether it's fixing potholes or making other repairs in the roadway. Next is the signal equipment upgrade and replacement. And this is maintaining our signal system within the city and making sure things are replaced and repaired as needed. Our last two tier ones, first on line fifteen is street reconstruction. So this is full depth reconstruction. This is when a street has gone beyond repair capabilities. We're not able to do a slurry seal or a mill and overlay. We have to actually rebuild the entire street. And then the last tier one on the list here is the walk and wheel plan implementation. So this is going through the plan and advancing projects within there. I will note that this particular line item was requested to be a tier one by E-TAC, similar to last year. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. Is one of these line items covered by the sales and use tax that we passed?
No, it is not. It would be in addition to the pavement maintenance by area. Those two sums are added together for our full breadth of our pavement maintenance. Correct, Jenny?
Is that?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Ward.
On street reconstruction, how do we target specific streets? Like, I've been waiting several years now, as many of us have, specifically on Union, because we're waiting for some other projects to take place before we do that reconstruction. But what are we identifying now currently that needs reconstruction?
So I'll answer the question and then I'll provide an update on Union. So typically, we're looking at the PCI or OCI ratings. That's the rating of the street. We're looking at the amount of queue alerts and patching that the crew has done. We're looking at the the depth of the breaks and the fractures, as well as the loading on the roadways. Union's a great example. The amount of truck traffic on there requires a very thick section of pavement from the top to the binder to the base course to make sure it supports that axle loading. On Union, you've got all the trash trucks, concrete trucks, there's pumper trucks, a lot of trucks. So a lot of axle loading, and that does a lot of damage to our roadways. We have completed a design to rebuild Union from Santa Fe to the bridge. And we're in the process of advancing that to construction. There is a specific line item project for that to the west of there, from the bridge west. We're coordinating with our partners in utilities due to a water line in there to make sure that we don't replace the roadway and then the water line comes right behind it. So that part will be a later project. But from the bridge, between the bridge and Santa Fe is up on deck to get done shortly.
Excellent. Good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Victor, a couple of questions. You stated, I believe, on the bridge repairs, it's up to a million dollars. What was the reasoning behind that?
We have to up our reports. There's a biannual report. So in addition to doing the repairs, every two years, we do an updated report that evaluates all our bridges and tells us the condition and where we need to prioritize.
Okay. And then second, so actually, I was surprised by this. So the pavement maintenance and the, what was the second item? The street reconstruction, this is over and above the sales tax of one point eight million or so that we're getting as part of the voter approval. Is there a reason for that for this year? It looks like it's ongoing. Is it, are we just that far behind in terms of our street repair?
We are, yes. And we will be coming to council shortly with an update on our overall street condition. We did a reassessment recently, and we're preparing that information now to bring to study session.
Okay.
Member Russell.
Thank you. Does the bridge repair include, are we starting on the Union Bridge soon?
That line item does not specifically address Union. Union actually has its own line item. So we did approve through council earlier this year, I believe it was February, a design contract to redesign that bridge. Again, thinking of the axle loading and all the needs on that bridge, we are going to look at a full deck replacement, and the design is currently in progress.
Okay, and are we almost done with the Dartmouth Bridge?
We are almost done with the Dartmouth Bridge. We are currently waiting on asphalt and temperatures to finish paving the top on the south side for the eastbound lanes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Prank.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question on the walk and wheel plan implementation. Can you talk to us a little bit about the out years and the request in twenty thirty being over double what we're looking at this year? Why is it increasing like that?
So it's generally increasing based on the scale of the projects. Inside the walk and wheel plan, there are priority projects, and they all have cost estimates based on the year the project was completed. So what we've tried to do is account for inflation and then hit the priority project. So as you get further down the list, those projects could be slightly lower priority. And that could be for a number of reasons. One could be cost, which is why we're seeing the increase. But two, the usability and the functionality of the project, or bang for your buck, if you will, is why they're later and probably more expensive.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Any questions from the boards? Or I guess I'll ask the question regarding alley paving. I know we've done that in previous years, but are we now taking more of the approach of using the asphalt shavings and, because there's a separate line on it for alley maintenance? Is that what we're doing under that piece and looking to prioritize that versus alley paving?
Correct, yeah. And alley paving, what you see there is the tier two is concrete. And what we would do there, and we've started to put a game plan together. We have some alleys that are, you know, a third, a quarter already paved. It's been done by a developer and it hasn't been completed. So when we look at the budget for the tier two alley paving, we try to make that work and accomplish as many alleys as we can. But we also coordinate with our maintenance crew to understand where the problem spots are at. Same goes for the millings. And then coordinating with other departments such as PD, if they have trouble spots that they need to get through regularly, we want to make sure we address those.
Perfect. All right, Victor, I see no further questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, we'll ask Chris, Director of Communications, to come back up, along with his staff members. And there is a typo on this slide, art in public places, the one percent. The oversight now is under the Communications Department and not with Parks, Rec, Library, and Golf.
So I covered neighborhood signs, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions, if there are any. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Lucia to talk about a new website platform.
Go ahead, Lucia.
Hi, my name is Lucia Magnuson. I'm the Web and Digital Content Strategist with the City of England. And for this new website platform, so in twenty twenty four, I launched the Usability Lab program. So I talked to individuals in the community, and we walked through the website and our individual microsites, as well as conducting an assistive technology usability lab, where I had members of the community who are blind go through our website with their assistive technology just to see how people are flowing through our website and our services. And from that Usability Lab program, in our final report, we found ten global issues that currently our platform does not address. Right now, our platform is very restrictive in terms of what we can do. And with that, we're looking at having a new website platform that is more flexible. And it's really exciting in the city because we have a lot of changes going on, especially with the website that we launched in twenty twenty one to now. A lot of that is microsites. We have all, we have eight microsites right now, but also our focus on community engagement and the tools that we've been utilizing in the Communications Department in order to talk to our community. So with this new website platform, looking for a lot of flexibility, a lot of usability fixes, and again, addressing the ten global issues that we identified in the Usability Lab program. From initial research with a request for information, a lot of, a lot of vendors, but vendors came back. We decided on a hundred thousand dollars as the initial cost to get a new website platform. And then from the ongoing fees from that, it's going to be very similar to our current website platform.
Thank you, Lucia. Regarding the website, State of Colorado has a requirement for accessibility, correct?
Yes.
Are we not meeting those accessibility requirements, or is this?
We are, we will meet the accessibility requirements. It was extended to July twenty twenty five. With the accessibility requirements right now, we're having more of a patchwork approach to having the accessibility issues fixed. We're going to meet compliance standards on, by July twenty twenty five. But if anything comes up with our current website platform, we could be looking at months for fixes. Again, very, very not flexible and.
So we've taken the platform as far as it can go, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you, Lucia. Any further questions regarding neighborhood signs or website? All right. Thank you, everyone.
I think we have one more.
Oh, was there?
Sorry, it's misclassified. We have taken over the Cultural Arts Commission in Communications, so I'm going to. Art in Public Places is the one percent, the capital public fund that funds Cultural Arts Commission. And we do a variety of things with this money. We have funded sculptures that are currently being looked at to be placed in the South Broadway corridor. We have also funded murals, different art events, and that just continues to grow each year.
Thank you very much, Vanessa. Any questions regarding the one percent? All right, don't see any. Thank you so much, Vanessa, Lucia, and Chris.
Thank you.
All righty, we've got Information Technology up next. I believe Joe Eisenbart is online, or maybe Brandon, I'm not sure.
Hi, I'm here.
Great. Thank you, Joe.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Joe Eisenbart, Information Technology Director. The two tier one projects that we have are network development and PC and MDT replacement. These are both programs for the network development program. We're asking for four hundred and thirty six thousand. This would be for improvements at the service center and at rec center, specifically equipment, wireless access points, and cabling at those two locations. For the PC and MDT replacement, we combined those two this year. So we have the original one twenty five that we ask per year for PC replacement. And we're asking for an additional one hundred thousand annually over the next four years, five years to fund replacement of the MDTs that are, as they need to be refreshed.
Thank you very much, Joe. Any questions regarding those two items? All right, I don't see any questions. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Christina.
All right, one more. We've got, for the Capital Improvement Fund, we have Emerald Ash Bore mitigation. We did turn that into a grant. And so our residents can apply for the grant to get reimbursed. If they remove an ash tree or treat an ash tree, they can reach out to the Parks and Rec Department, and we can work with them to get a grant for that. And then library furniture this year, we have, this current year, we have fifty thousand. And to continue to replace the furniture within the library, another fifty thousand for next year to continue to refresh the furniture that has been there a very long time.
Any questions regarding the Emerald Ash Borough?
Nope.
All right, I see no questions. Thank you, Christina.
Right, next up, I believe, is Police Chief Dave Jackson. He'll come up and speak about police body armor and patrol car dash camera system.
Dave Jackson, Chief of Police. We are, is this about the body cameras? Yep, we are looking to replace our body cam system. They're subscription based, and we are, we are out of contract, or we are going to be out of contract next year. So we have looked at, I believe Exxon is the name of the company at this point, to to outfit our body cam needs.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Jenny may know the answer to this question if you don't. So are we using the police Geo Bond fund money to replace these body worn cams?
Not in this request. Our initial purchase, we did use the Bond Premium money for the initial purchase of the body and patrol car dash cam camera system.
Okay, are we going to eventually use that money up?
Is my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, and I'm surprised that Member Noonan Camp hasn't beat me to it. Just a question, and I'm surprised that member Noonan Camp hasn't beat me to it, but are we able to use Prop 130 money for this, or no?
Yes.
We can? Okay. Cool. That was it. Anything else, chief?
That's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you so much, chief.
Thank you. All righty, last but not least, Victor with Public Works.
All right, good evening again. So we've got a couple of programs and projects here up first. Line 10, ADA Compliance Projects. So this is internal to buildings and things that come up. We are currently collaborating with the City Attorney's Office this year on a transition plan that'll help us identify projects to get in compliance, and so we'll be drawing those funds down in the very near future. Line 11 is a project building one at the Service Center. I believe a few of you have given a tour to the Service Center, and the invitation's open to anybody that would like to tour the Service Center. We actually have two buildings. There's a tier-two down there on line 18. These buildings, the roof is literally falling in, and they're probably, they were probably constructed in the 50s and 60s, and their useful life has come to an end, and to continue to do repairs is extensive and costly. So we're proposing to replace building one out at the Service Center next year to a more functional building that can be used by staff. And this includes multiple departments, not just Public Works in this location. Line 12, Facilities and Operations. The facilities team has a list of projects that they're hoping to accomplish every year, whether it's maintenance upgrades, and this is in-line and does not overlap with the energy efficiency projects, but in tandem with projects and things that are not covered under that. Up next is the freight elevator replacement. So here at Civic, the freight elevator is back by the courts and is used to carry stuff up and down between the various floors. It is constantly in need of repair, and at this point, we need to do pretty much of an overhaul to bring it up to current standard and make sure we meet all elevator safety criteria, but to keep it operational for more than a month at a time. Line 14, again, coordinating with other departments. In this case, our Parks Department, the gymnasium curtain divider. It's a one-time project for $40,000. Line 15 is the security cameras, and this is a program, and this is updating and adding cameras around either Civic and coordinating with PD. Also, at some of our other facilities, the Service Center is a good example where we've had to add some cameras recently. And then the last tier-one on the list is line 16, and that is security at Civic Center and Rec Center. So this is working on physical security in and around the buildings, whether it's changing out door locks or other security measures that are needed, coordinating with Allied and what we're hearing from our partners and other departments.
Thank you, Victor. Member Wright?
Thank you. Last year, we had the Service Center generator as a tier-two. I see facility backup generators as a tier-two, and I believe it was multiple facilities, Rec Center, Malley Center. I believe there's four places.
And one of the fire stations, yes.
One of the fire stations. With, I know this year, we opened the Malley Center as an emergency overnight shelter with storms and that type of thing, and we're not sure what we're going to do next year for emergency overnight sheltering because of funding issues. Is there a reason we didn't look at the generators as a tier-one issue opposed to a tier-two?
Budget was approved last year. We also pursued unsuccessfully, unfortunately, a grant for generators. So council did approve in the 2025 budget some additional funding for generators, and we're currently in the process of, with a consultant, designing a generator for the Service Center. We do anticipate the money that was allocated will be enough to roll over to at least one additional facility as well, which is, since we don't know quite yet how far our dollars are going to stretch, we have some ideas. We think we're going to be able to get one additional facility. That's why it's a tier-two instead of a tier-one.
So the Tacoma Fire Station, is that an active fire station?
It is, yes.
That's definitely a priority. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Ward?
When a project occurs in a facility that's used only by one department, what delineates whether the money comes out of Public Works' budget or that department's budget? I'm seeing a couple examples here. The gym curtain divider is one of those, where it's at the Rec Center. Why isn't it coming out of the Parks and Rec budget?
Well, Public Works' facilities maintenance would be doing the install and coordinating it, and at the end of the day, it, we're, all the money kind of comes from one pot. So since we're going to be managing the project in coordination with Parks, that's why it's primarily in our budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? I had that same question.
I'm happy to give it to Christina. I don't think she wants it.
Well, she's not up here, so. All right, Victor, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right. And now we're discussing the Police Building Construction Fund, Fund 34, or what we also refer to as the Bond Premium Money.
So we have about $2 million. I'm sorry, are you ready? We have about $2 million with 1.3 encumbered for two renovations for the Fox Building, and the remaining $736,000, over the next five years, we have several items that are in need of replacement, rifles and some rifles and replacing those. We also have some ballistic shields that are at the end of life and need to be replaced. And we would also like to, there are also a subscription, but to the Flock Camera mobile platforms to, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice, for a Flock Camera subscription to increase our camera visibility.
All right, any questions for the chief? Go ahead, Member Wright.
Hi, Chief. For that Flock Camera subscription, is it to extend the subscription, or what the subscription would be doing?
Yeah, what we are looking into, a couple of different platforms, but the one that we are really focusing on right now is the kind that you would see at retail establishments right now that are on a trailer that could be mobile and then move from location to location based on needs in the city.
And don't we have some of those already at King Supers, Walmart?
Those are private. Those are owned and operated by, by those various institutions as opposed to ours that we could move to, say, a concert or a high-crime area or a hotspot of some sort.
So if there is a crime going on on those private-owned ones, although they're same police and has a police thing, does that crime report directly to the police department?
We have to go to them to get that information or get it downloaded.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
So now we have Victor back with us, and he's going to discuss the capital request for the Stormwater Drainage Fund.
Yes, for the Stormwater Drainage Fund, we have two tier-ones. You've seen IGAs come through for, number one, Dry Gulch and Harvard Gulch. We're continuing to collaborate with Mile High Flood District. They have selected a consultant and are beginning design, so it's anticipated this money will be needed to actually build the construction of the selected and designed improvement in 2026. Line two, repair and rehabilitate existing storm sewer. We are wrapping up the final leg of our storm sewer inventory and cleaning, and anticipate being able to then rank our storm sewer in areas that need repair and begin those repairs immediately using this proposed request.
All right, any questions from council? All right, Victor, thank you so much.
Okay, next is the Concrete Utility Fund.
All right, on Concrete Utility Fund, we have two tier-one programs for 2026 and beyond. First up is curb and gutter repair. Again, this is repairing curb and gutter and sidewalk repair by area. Similar to our pavement maintenance program, we generally go around the city in certain areas and repair sidewalk. That's not to say that if there's an issue outside of the zone we're proposing to work in, that we're not going to go there and make that repair. We certainly do evaluate all requests and issues and repair those as appropriate.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. So under this, well, curb and, I don't know if it's curb and gutter repair, at the traffic circle on Cherokee, the, the north exit from that circle, part of the curb has been really damaged. There's hunks of concrete there. So would it be covered under curb and gutter, or would it be covered under the other one?
And that location, I believe, is concrete paving. So we'd have to look and see if it's integral to the actual paving. Hopefully, it's not, and there's a joint, but it would, I would imagine, generally fall under line one there, curb and gutter repair. We can take a look at that and see if it's not on the list, if we can get it added.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Looks like no further questions on Concrete Utility.
All right, next fund is the Service Center Fund.
So Service Center Fund, we have one building, and this, again, this building is shared by multiple departments, and we're looking at a one-time request for a tier-one there of $500,000. This is to upgrade multiple systems on that facility to keep it habitable, I'll say, for, for all the teams. The air conditioning units are, if not original, not too far beyond that, as well as some additional upgrades over fleet. Our fleet bays are there. We've got some roofing challenges there that need to be fixed and things of that nature.
Go ahead, Member Wright. Wrong button.
It's $500,000. This is just upgrades, repairs. Do you have estimates on how to rebuild it? I mean, when I took a tour over a year ago?
We do. It was based on a really high-level preliminary study from a number of years ago. We could dig those up, and then we'd have to adjust and bring them to current dollar amount. But if we were going to rebuild the building, it would be probably recommended to master plan the entire site to maximize the use. We do have a number of buildings out there, including the ones we're talking about taking down, that strategically could be relocated to maximize the overall property use.
Okay, all right. We may need to have that discussion. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, see no further questions. I think that's good on Service Center.
All right, the next one is our Capital Equipment Replacement Fund.
So this fund is affectionately called SURF, and so this is replacement of our vehicles. The request for 2026 is 1.8 and change. This is based on the criteria inside of SURF, the lifecycle plus the cost to repair versus value of the vehicles. So we maintain a list of vehicles and anticipate, based on those costs, the age of the vehicle, the mileage, that these are the number of vehicles, or the cost for the number of the vehicles that we're replacing in 2026. We have seen delivery of these vehicles speed up, which is a good thing. It's been, coming out of COVID, as you probably all recall, it was extremely rough to get vehicles. We would order them, and it would take a year and a half to two years. We're seeing that accelerate nowadays closer in the six-to-eight month range, depending on the vehicle.
All right, any questions from council on SURF? Nope, don't see any. Thank you, Victor.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty, up next is our Utilities Department, and they'll discuss the water and sewer fund capital items.
Hey, Peter. Hey, Sarah. Do you want one of my witty remarks, or no?
Okay, I'm going to keep us on schedule. So, why is everybody laughing? So we'll start with the Water Fund, and I think the theme on the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund is we're at the five-year point of our original master plan from 2019, and so this year, we're actually going to remaster plan things. So we're still carrying through the projects as we originally have planned them over the last few years, and we anticipate them changing once we do a new master plan. But as, what you're seeing right now is as accurate as the information we have, and we think it addresses our major issues. So if you look at the first set of projects, those are WIFI-funded projects, and those are generally related to the plant. You can see EINC improvements, that's the electrical instrumentation and controls. You can see an ongoing programmatic investment in updating those EINC components, as well as the finished water pump station. That's a pump station that's actually in the Allen Water Treatment Plant, and it's upgrades to that station itself, just replacing some of the aging assets. You can also see process improvements at the water treatment plant. Again, ongoing investment over time to replace systems that are out of date and pass their useful life. The solids handling improvement project, we anticipate ending in 2026, as well as the Denver Water Emergency Interconnect. Again, some of that's based on timing of construction. However, we anticipate those projects being complete in 2026. Next slide. So now we're getting into some of the other projects that are SRF-funded or cash-funded, and you can see the distribution system improvements, which, an ongoing annual and valve replacement program. We actually already have one in place, so again, this is something that'll be refined as we do our new master plan. We are still continuing to replace valves as we find locations. Right now, we're actually installing 91 insertion valves. That's a lot of what you're seeing going on in Broadway. And what that's doing is it's providing us tremendous ability to isolate the system, much more than we've been able to ever in the past, which will help us if we have a break or we needed to, an outage, we can limit the scope of that outage. You can also see on there the Union Ave Waterline Project. We have that scheduled, and I anticipated that one's in coordination with Public Works. Then you move down to Water Supply, and the City Ditch Piping Project is probably the most significant. We actually, just last week, received bids on that project and got some pretty favorable pricing. So for the longest time, we've been concerned about the pricing on that project. We went out to bid and got some good pricing from the market. So we'll be looking at that actually this week and coming to council with a recommendation for the first two major reaches of that. That's Reach Three and Reach Four. But it really helps us from a budget perspective because it fits within our, our long-term anticipated budget. And then Meadow Creek is the system that's owned, that's in the mountains, that's operated by Denver Water. We, we basically respond to what their programmatic investments are on Meadow Creek. Next slide. And then the lead reduction program, we have funded through 2026. We anticipate this will probably push into 2027, but right now, we're well underway. I believe we're at about 850-ish lead lines replaced, and we're replacing it about between 45 and 50 a week. And so we're, we're getting through the, what we anticipate to be about 3,000 lines. Any questions on the Water Fund?
Go ahead, Member Ward.
I've heard this term used a number of times, and I've never asked, but what, what is, is there a difference between an insertion valve and any other type of valve, or is that just a term that we use?
Yeah, so insertion valve is actually a newer technology that we're employing, and what it does is we can actually cut in a valve to a live water line. And so what they, in our normal, in a normal situation, what we'll do is we'll, we'll isolate off a section where maybe a leaking valve is, we'll cut the whole valve out, and then we'll replace it with a new valve. What this insertion valve technology allows us to do is we can actually go into a reach of live, full-pressure line, and then it cuts in a new valve that then is fully inserted into the system without shutting down the system. And so one of our biggest challenges with the distribution system is isolation. And so this will allow us to, one, insert a valve that then allows us broader isolation in areas that we struggle with isolation. in areas that we struggle with isolation.
Thank you. All right, see no further questions?
The only thing I'd say on the Sewer Fund, if you go back to that previous slide. So the, the fund balances are generally two and three million. Part of that is because of the way we manage the WIFIA funding on this. We can push out the WIFIA distributions quite a ways. As we can, we, what we do is we watch the fund balance, and we accrue WIFIA-eligible projects that we can push all the way out until 2027, 2029, to, if we need to make that disbursement. And if we do that, then we don't pay interest on it, and that's why we, we pay attention to that distribution. So it may seem like it's low, but we have about $10 million of available submittal to WIFIA that we're just pushing out. Next. So the, the major fund, the major cost on the Sewer Fund is the 50% CIP funding of SPR. And then you can see the other line item is just ongoing maintenance for sewer pipe and manhole rehab when necessary.
All right, any questions on Sewer? All right, next item, Peter.
Okay, South Platte Renew. So this is a new, new updated plan, five-year plan for capital projects. We completed a master plan in 2024. That plan went into a great, a lot of detail with our in-house staff, which, which is different than what happened in 2019. In 2019, it was largely driven by outside consulting support. In this instance, because we have built up an internal engineering, engineering division and associated staff, we have in-house knowledge. So we actually drove more of this than, than relying on consultants. The consultants put the plan together, but we drove the technology decisions, the timing, those kinds of things, to make sure it was fitting with our overall long-term strategy. So a lot of these are related to regulatory drivers. There's lots of technical detail in those that are, are, are projects that are, if, just from a holistic bucket perspective, they're, they're meeting regulatory drivers and replacement of, of aging infrastructure. A lot of this is now in coordination with our Park Program. So the master planning was done in combination with the Park Program, which is the pilot, the piloting aspect of new technology to solve these regulatory program, regulatory issues long-term with technology systems that work for us. And so that, this master planning process worked in concert with that, that overall Park strategy. Next slide. So there's more projects that fall into that same level, general category. The thing I want to draw to your attention here is if you look at the bottom line for South Platte Renew, it's generally around 16, 18 million until we get to 2030, which it jumps up to about 34. And that is the, the, we've been talking about this for years. It's that window of when we're going to see significant need for investment is 2030-ish. And we've been, like I said, we've been talking about this since about 2019 or 2020. The window's starting to come in where our capital need is double. Now, from a perspective, perspective, you can see that the five-year total is 100 million. Englewood, City of Englewood residents' portion of that is about 11.7%. So it's about 11,700,000. The other 88.3 million is Littleton and all the connector districts. So that, it looks like a big number, but proportionally, it's a, it's a small number for Englewood itself.
All right, any questions on South Platte Renew? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And so the 34 million, some of the things that we've been doing to mitigate that in the future, are we having to change those things, or could this number, this 34 million, change?
Yeah, so the 34, so if you go one more slide back, one of the things that we're really working on here is if, if you look down line four, where it says cooling towers, full-scale implementation, that is a, that is a, a need that, right now, from a regulatory perspective, we, we are, the water we discharge to the stream during the winter is too warm. And so the only way to mitigate that is to, is through cooling towers. Now, we, as well as other wastewater plants in the state, think that that's a, not necessarily the best approach, because you trade, you know, air pollution and, and other, other energy consumption costs to try and reduce the, the temperature of the water for one particular fish. So that's a project, it's $18 million, that through our negotiations with the state, our ongoing negotiations, we think we can come up with better solutions that would cost less. That's just one example of what we are, what we constantly engage with the state on, but also what Park is, is doing long-term in terms of helping us push out the need as long as possible so we don't spend too much money too soon.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, any further questions for Peter? All right.
Thank you.
Peter, Sarah, thank you very much.
All right, the last portion of our presentation tonight is just reviewing the prioritization tool. And this is going to benefit the Planning and Zoning Commission members, as well as the Budget Advisory Commission, or Committee members as well. So, these are the various tabs I have. And then, Mark, if you're online, if you could present my Excel spreadsheet up on the screen. Hopefully. All right, if not, I'll just, just walk through the, there's four spreadsheets in the workbook. First one is just the instructions. Oh, looks like we're going to make contact. Perfect. So the first tab in the workbook is just instructions, basically asking the members to make a copy of the workbook, entering their name, and that's going to be on just the tab that's labeled 30-PIF, which is the, the Public Improvement Fund. And then basically, what the, how the members will make their scores, or determine their scores, is through the presentations that they listened to tonight, as well as the Capital Improvement Plan that we have attached at the end of the presentation in your packet. So the second tab is where all the data comes together. So the first section is just your capital request general information, which is the fund, the department, the proposal, the capital request title, whether it's a program or project, the priority, whether it's a Tier One, Tier Two. The financial activity section will provide you any expenditure amount that has already been expended for these particular programs or projects in 2024, as well as what was budgeted in 2025, and any expenditures in 2025 through March. The next section is just, you know, free, free form. Members can put in a partial dollar amount, any notes that they'd like to make and come up with a, you know, another proposal. Section three is the five-year capital estimated cost requests. And section four is the weighted scores from the departments as they entered their, their capital requests. And then their ranking. And then the last section is the member scores, and, and that's linked from the next two tabs, whether it's a Capital Projects Fund or a Public Improvement Fund. And then there are 10 criteria that we're asking each of the members to associate with each of the capital requests. So your criteria is going to be in columns A through B. And then you're going to make your, you'll put in your score as you go across to the right. You'll have the, in column, or in row six, you'll have the name of the capital project. And then you'll see where the scores can be entered. And then as you go down through the various criteria. There's not only the criteria, but also the score and, and the definition of that score. And then also provided is just for information only, the, the raw data that comes out of our Open Gov system, that's, that houses all of our capital request information. And then also our department-ordered ranking of all the projects, whether it is a Public Improvement Fund capital request or a capital project, capital request. And then that's it.
Go ahead.
And I'm happy to attend any of the meetings to, to review this with the members as well.
Sounds good. So Jenny, this is, before I pass it on, Member Noon Camp. So this is going to be a workbook that gets used by council, as well as Budget Advisory Committee and P&amp;Z.
I believe council decided not to be a scorekeeper, but they would collect, you'd collect all the information from the members of P&amp;Z, Budget Advisory Committee, as well as our Capital Review Committee.
Okay.
So we'll provide you all of those individual scores.
All right, Member Noon Camp.
Thank you for the overview here. I believe this is the second year we've used this tool, second or third? After we used it last year, were we able to solicit feedback from the boards and commissions who used it? And have we adjusted anything about the tool based on that feedback?
We've adjusted so that the format, the formatting of the columns and rows, I think now that it, in terms of the data entry, it flows easier and with the way you'd expect it to flow as, as you're entering in your data. That was the only thing I could remember, but I'll, I'll definitely want more feedback from members.
I appreciate, I was going to say, I appreciate that. This is still a relatively new system for the city, and so I think it's, it's a very thoughtful, but also quite complex tool. And I want to continue to get feedback on how it's working for residents and for those who are participating.
It is, yeah. And I, I know if you're not Excel-oriented, it is, it is, it is a, you know, just a different tool to use. But yes, if, if the majority of individuals do not want to use it this way, we'll definitely look at other alternatives.
I will say, on behalf of council, I find the scores incredibly helpful. And so whatever way we can get to that is, is helpful for me, but thank you so much for the overview.
You're welcome.
Member Wright.
Thank you. I appreciate this Excel much more over Google Docs, so I thank you. I wanted to ask, if someone wanted to add something, like looking at the Service Center master plan, and look into doing that, since there's some, I think I saw over $900,000 just going into maintenance in the Service Center, are they able to do something like that as something they would like to add and look at doing?
So adding in a new project?
Yes, if, if they feel that's a priority.
I don't see how it would preclude them, but how would they know that it's a project if, if, if they didn't?
Or could they note something? I mean, we're, we're looking at a lot of money as a priority one and two for the Service Center. It's over $900,000.
Yep.
I mean, are we, Service Center needs a lot of work, and a lot of departments need it, so that's part of my question on...
Oh, I, I see what you're saying. Yes, in, in that note section, that is where it would be very helpful if the members indicate that they would like to make changes or come up with a new idea, new program, that would be helpful to, to list it in this area.
Okay, okay, perfect.
And then also, you know, definitely add the row if they, if they'd wish, but also to make those notations in terms of, you know, we feel this is a, a priority, or, you know, a Tier One priority.
Right, or just add, you know, this needs to be a master plan for this. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep, and then you, you would have that information to review as well.
Mayor, if I could just...
Yeah, go ahead, City Manager.
I do just want to make sure that Member Wright and all of council knows that if there are projects that are not listed here, or maybe they're Tier Two that you'd like to be a Tier One, you know, if the Service Center, a new Service Center is a priority, those are ultimately decisions that are councils and councils alone. And so if you wanted us to, you know, analyze something further, perhaps maybe if a few of you wanted us to analyze something further, we certainly can do that.
All right, anything else from members of council, any words of wisdom, anything regarding the capital projects? PIF. All right, I don't see anything else. So actually, this is just a question. So right now, we, based off of current dollars, we're expecting to have $7 million available, right? And then a little bit under $9 million is what is currently under Tier One, is that...
Yes, that's correct.
But those numbers will change as we learn more about revenues for 2025, correct, Jenny? Or do we go in with the understanding that it's $7 million?
That, that, this is pretty, pretty set for, for 2026.
Okay, so if there are Tier Two and Tier Three projects that members of BAC or P&amp;C, P&amp;Z want to move up, then there has to, it probably would make sense to have like a justification of where to take the money from a Tier One project, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, I think that's all I had. Anything else from council? All right, members from BAC and P&amp;Z, thank you very much for sticking around and listening to us talk, but looking forward to your recommendations here over the next couple of months as we go through the budget season, so. All right, yeah, thank you very much, staff. With that, everyone, let's take a 10-minute break. It's 8:24. If we could just come back at 8:35. Thank you, everyone. Members of council, if you could please be seated. All right, everyone, we are now back. We're moving on to Agenda Item 7. We have Deputy City Manager Tim Don, along with City Manager Sean Lewis, here to provide council a recommendation for a housing goal-setting discussion. Good evening, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to make sure this is not your longest study session topic of the night, so just really quickly, as you probably remember, on January 21st and also March 24th, you discussed the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Task Force. At the March 24th session, which was Director Power, myself, and City Manager Lewis, we went over the recommendations of the task force and also kind of the feasibility of implementing them. Several of you at the time mentioned the idea of setting a goal for affordable housing, and so tonight really is just to take a temperature check with all of you to see if you'd like to set a goal, first of all. Second of all, if you would like to work on setting a goal, if you'd like to do it as part of a facilitated study session. We did check with one of the facilitators for the Affordable Housing Task Force who would be interested in doing it, if that's a direction you'd like to go into. Or third, if you have any other suggestions on how to do it. Just one thing I also want to point out too, and obviously we don't have to get into it tonight, but in terms of setting a goal, I did look at a few different examples of other cities. Some it's a very specific target related to housing production, others it's more of a thematic goal of something aspirational. In some cases, it's both, and in some cases, it's kind of specific about different production levels for different types of housing or in different parts of the city depending on the size of the city. So with that, I'll just turn it over for a discussion about whether you'd like to set a goal, whether you're okay with doing it as part of a facilitated study session, or whether you have other ideas on how to do it.
Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
Would you like to open up to discussion, Mayor?
Unless you have questions, but yeah, either way.
Okay. Thank you for bringing this, and I think a goal is a good idea. Being part of this process for a few years now, I do think we need some shared language around what we think we need in Inglewood, and it was one of the recommendations coming out of the Root Policy Report and the housing assessment that we did. And the Affordable Housing Task Force actually did, you know, propose a shared vision and mission for what they were trying to do, a vision for what housing looks like in Inglewood that I think we could consider adopting in a more formal way. My only caution is that if we try to get like incredibly granular and specific on a goal where it takes us a year to try to set the right goal, we won't actually make progress on the most important things. And so I think some general quantitative measurements would be helpful, but I would also encourage us to think about some qualitative pieces as well, like we want to increase homeownership in the city, we want more starter homes. Those kinds of things could be helpful. So I think we don't have to answer those questions tonight. I think we should definitely pursue additional conversations and a workshop on this. I would be open to seeing the facilitators from the Housing Task Force come back, I thought that they were effective, and that's what I meant on it.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Anyone else want to weigh in? Go ahead, Member Wright.
There are some questions that have remained unanswered that some members had asked when we had the study session on this. I believe Member Prang, Member Russell had asked some specific questions. I don't recall what they were, but I remember that they were asked. Have we received those answers before we move forward?
Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we did receive a number of questions from council that we're planning on bringing back to the next discussion on this. The, there were four council members, Noonan Camp, Wright, Prang, and Russell, who all said, "We agree that a number is needed," and we think that that could be really a separate discussion. And so I think what staff was suggesting is that we have a workshop-type discussion that focuses just on that, because it is, to the four of your points, so foundational to what we end up doing in terms of the strategies. But yes, a lot of questions on strategy, but this was kind of a piece that we felt council direction that was more foundational, but certainly we can revisit that.
Anything else, Member Wright?
No, I need to think about it for a minute. Thank you.
Okay. Member Russell.
Thank you. And I appreciate that, but there's, there are some things, like the Affordable Housing Task Force came up with certain things, but they never had any cost to it or where the revenue was going to come. I really think that we do need some financial information specifically before we even start setting goals. I mean, I know there was an article in the Denver Post about Littleton, and they were going a direction, and they ended up just doing a survey and decided there wasn't room, and so they're not doing anything right now. And actually, I think Donna Jones sent that to all of council. It was written by John Aguilar, and it was on April 13th. Suburban Denver City, the latest flashpoint in Colorado's housing affordability. Saga feels squeezed by density pressures. And I think density is a big piece of this whole, because we have some areas that are affordable, and if we tear them down, then we don't have that affordability anymore. So then density becomes in the discussion, and that's what it's been. And I think maybe we need to look at density. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time if we decide it's something we just cannot afford to do. It's taking staff time and so, but I think we need numbers before we can decide whether it's something that we think we could afford. Thank you.
Go ahead, City Manager Lewis.
I was just going to say, if the, that's actually then three that wanted to set a goal, if, and we can continue to refine the numbers that we presented just very preliminarily at the last study session on the topic, so we could continue on that and just kind of set the goal aside till later. That's another option, particularly if we only have three council members who want to move forward with that.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I'm fine with setting a goal. I think the questions I would want to answer, is this, is this a goal for housing in the city is going to, you know, either build or build through public-private partnerships or in coordination with the housing authority? Or is this a broader housing goal of, you know, more of an aspirational housing goal as to what we would like to see, you know, see built out there? And I think those are kind of, I could, I could see, I could see a case for either approach there. I think the second one, the more aspirational one, is harder, because then we have to figure out what indirect, you know, indirect tools do we have at our disposal? And that could be as simple as, you know, like the missing middle discussion, allowing for more missing middle housing and hoping that, you know, brings in the increased units that we need and that kind of thing. So fine with a goal, but just want to be realistic with it if it's just stuff the city's doing, or understand that it's an aspirational goal if we're doing it more broadly in the community.
My perspective, I like to set a goal. So I would like to have a discussion on this, whether it's a workshop, study session, bringing up the facilitator, I'm fine with that. So I like seeing, well, I was going to ask the question, Sean, I guess we haven't agreed on providing the funding, but I know that we've talked about utilizing, what's the name of that fund?
EMER for McClellan.
Yeah. We've talked about that, and I think we may have had members of council, or a majority of council that was willing to go that direction. I don't think we hammered out a number, but.
Correct.
So that was one aspect of it. But I guess my point is, like, at least for me, I like having concrete numbers. I may be a minority on this, so I like to start with like the DOLA number that we have, potentially use that as a minimum. I also like the idea of kind of tracking, actually, I think I'm all over the place on that one. There's a lot of other numbers that I kind of want to see as well, and I could provide that as an email or part of the discussion if we have a study session, but there's, there's different aspects that I do want to measure as part of this.
Member Prang.
Thank you. I think I need to hear from a facilitator, a very knowledgeable facilitator, how to approach it, whether it should be aspirational or it should be more like concrete numbers and we want this many units created within this amount of time. I don't feel like we're at the place where we truly understand how to approach the goal-setting piece of it. So for me, I would be very interested in having the conversation to hear some insight around that, and then potentially having that coupled with some success stories of the creation of dedicated funding sources, so that, you know, to get at some of what Member Russell is speaking to, like, if we don't know how we're going to fund it, then why are we setting a goal? Well, if we can get our heads around how to resource to a dedicated or several different, a mixture of dedicated funding streams, then I'm more comfortable to get to like actual numbers and units that we should be building. But just to have kind of more of that philosophical level conversation of how do you approach setting a goal, maybe with some examples included of cities that have done it and done it well, and actual realized numbers of units created? Because part of what I structure or struggle with is, in some of the recommendations, there's some real theoretical concepts, like if we have no parking minimums, then it's going to create affordable housing. That's a pretty big stretch for me. If you can tell me how many affordable housing units have been created somewhere, like that, for me, that's, we can bring down the cost of development, but that doesn't necessarily translate into numbers of affordable housing units created. And so that level of information is really important for me as well around setting a goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Prang. Member Noonan Camp.
I thought it would be helpful to go back and reference the Root Report itself, the Housing Needs Assessment, because their very first recommendation to us was to set housing goal or multiple goals. because their very first recommendation to us was to set housing goal or multiple goals. And they actually articulate some options for us of how we could do that. They say it varies by city, but we could have an output-oriented goal. So 10% of all new housing units will be affordable by 2040, you know. That could be something. We could have an input-oriented goal based on what the city will do. So by a certain date, the city will have a dedicated funding source. The city will have a partnership with the land trust. Like, we could say, "These are the steps we're going to take." Or we could have kind of these value-oriented goals that we are going to increase attainable ownership for a certain income level of citizens. So I think that there are some established, to Member Prang's point, ways that we can do this. And I think we could even maybe go back to Root and say, "Hey, you gave us some of these templates. How do we actually start putting these things into practice?" But again, I think what is really interesting in their recommendation is that we should have these goals not only so that we can keep ourselves accountable and so we can send a message to our citizens, but most specifically, it actually says that we can use them in negotiating tactics with developers. We can say, "Hey, the city has a goal. We really want to get to this many units at this AMI level. If you want, you know, to work with us, like, this is what we're going to need you to do." And I think we don't have that leverage point right now because we haven't said what we wanted to do as a city. And so I think there's a real opportunity for us in kind of shaping the future here. And so I would think, I would use this as a starting point and share some of this with a potential facilitator.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great point, and I think we are back to at least four who want to have the goal setting and a few that have expressed the interest in the facilitator, which staff thoroughly agrees with. And we have a number of options on that, you know, in terms of maybe someone from Root, maybe someone from the facilitation group for the Affordable Housing Task Force. The cities in the north metro area have done this much more frequently than cities in the south. So we have a number of contacts there that we could call upon to come down. And so would council like for us to just proceed with getting a facilitator? And then maybe we could just... We could maybe start early on a night or just dedicate the first couple of hours to this. We just don't want to, you know, kind of rush the process or... What's council's direction there?
Well, I was going to say, it's like, if we're going to have it as part of a study session, it should be on a study session night, right? So...
Right. We just think it should maybe be the only item.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Maybe just, maybe it be the only item or really dedicate plenty of time to it.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah. It's more about workshop facilitator.
Or just one of two items, something along those lines, because it could take a run of the conversation of the evening. All right. Any further comments from council? All right. Perfect. Tim and Sean, thank you so much for your time on this item. All right. We are going to move on to Agenda Item 8. So this is an executive session in the Pike... Yeah. Let me see here. Yeah, so this is an executive session. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Point of information.
Sure.
Because the date that this was posted is listed as April 7th. It wasn't duly posted for 48 hours. And you, even when you opened the meeting, said April 7th. Today is April 14th.
Did I really say that?
Yes, you did.
Okay, yeah.
So...
City Attorney Niles, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for raising this. I discussed it today with the city clerk's office when they discovered that, for some reason, the agenda listed April 7th, even though it's April 14th. They did post the agenda under the April 14th calendar. And so we post all of the notices on our website. So it was on the correct date and posted, showing the correct date. However, the first page of the agenda did say April 7th. That's true. However, city council also, at the last meeting, announced that the special meeting would be tonight in this room, starting at 6 o'clock. So I do think we complied with the public posting requirements. But council certainly has discretion to continue the scheduled executive session to a later date if they don't think that the public was duly notified or perhaps was confused by the April 7th date on the first page of the agenda.
Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Don't we have the authority to have an executive session, even if it's not scheduled and posted?
Yes, except it does have to be in a special meeting.
Right.
A regular special meeting. It couldn't have been at a study session, which is why the mayor announced this was a special meeting tonight.
Right. But that was, we knew that because that was announced at the last council meeting, so...
But yes, it's not required to be on an agenda to hold an executive session as long as it's a regular special meeting.
But, I mean, it still has to be posted 48 hours. If we're going to have an executive session, I mean, can we just come in and decide we're going to do an executive session if it's a regular meeting? Yeah, we can do that. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
So I guess, members of council, I'm fine with moving forward with the executive session tonight. I did announce it last Monday night. I didn't even realize that it had the wrong date on this agenda. I just always go to the calendar and clicked on the 14th, so... If anybody disagrees, just let me know. All right? Perfect. So this is an executive session... Well, actually, I'll just read from it. "So I moved to go into executive session tonight to discuss the sale or transfer of the ground lease on city-owned property surrounding the Civic Center pursuant to CRS 246402-4A. Present at the executive session are the following persons: Mayor Othaniel Sierra, Mayor Protam Joe Anderson, council members Chelsea Noonan Camp, Tina Prang, Rita Russell, Stephen Ward, Kim Wright, City Manager Sean Lewis, Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd, City Attorney Tamara Niles, Mark Tompkins from Stray Advisory Services, Real Estate Outside Council Kirsten Crawford, Director of Community Development Brad Power, Chief Redevelopment Officer Dad Perumpa, and Representatives from New Inglewood Dustin Jones and Justin Letkin. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Member Ward. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
All right. We will now exit this meeting and reconvene in the Pike's pink room on the third floor. Thank you.
Are we recording, Andrina? Do you know? All right, thank you. All right, everyone, we are now back. The time is now ten thirty-four and the executive session has been concluded. Present at the executive session were the following persons: Mayor Othaniel Sierra, Mayor Pro Tem Joe Anderson, council members Chelsea Noonencamp, Tina Prang, Rita Russell, Stephen Ward, Kim Wright, City Manager Sean Lewis, Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd, City Attorney Tamara Niles, Mark Tompkins from Stray Advisory Services, Real Estate Outside Council Kirsten Crawford, Director of Community Development Brad Power, Chief Redevelopment Officer Dan Perumba, and Representatives of New Inglewood, Dustin Jones and Justin Lutkin. I move to close the executive session. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonencamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matter is not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. All right, everyone, we are now moving on to reports from boards and commission council liaisons. Anyone have anything for tonight? Go ahead, Member Noonencamp.
Sure, the Cultural Arts Commission met at the beginning of this month, and the saga of the median art project that we have been working on for over a year has reached some kind of resolution. The committee agreed to no longer pursue putting sculptural art on the Hampton medians, which is what we've been trying to do for many years. They actually have the pedestals already built in because CDOT will not approve them. They're becoming absolutely impossible to work with. And we've been working on this project for so long that CDOT has changed their approval process while we've been in the approval process, and they want us to now start over from scratch. And to get these, to do this process also costs us money, and so the commission voted not to continue to expend additional funds in trying to get the CDOT approval. So the option, they're looking for alternative sites. The staff is bringing in some alternative sites. One potential option could be the South Broadway median projects and some of the complete streets improvements, putting some of the art there. We control the medians on Broadway, not CDOT, and so it's a much easier thing for us to get down. So it's a little bit bittersweet, but hopefully we will, we actually have already purchased the art. We own the sculptures, but they're just, no one can see them, which is really sad. So more to come, I'm sure, on that.
Thank you, Member Noonencamp. Member Prang?
Thank you. Parks and Rec met last Thursday, had a great meeting at the Malle Center, got some exciting updates on improvements to be made to the facility. There is going to be some revamping of the fitness area, removal of some trees, expansion of the area, and updated equipment. So there's a lot of buzz and excitement about that. This Thursday, there will be a Healthy Aging Expo from two to five at the Malle Center, and that will include a lot of resources for, you know, aging well in place and how to stay healthy as you age. And then I also just wanted to highlight that during our commissioner's choice, at the end of the meeting, we had a commissioner share a story about the Rec Center and just how thrilled they were with some of the inclusionary practices. The commissioner has a child who's impacted with some, you know, different abilities, and just really saying the praises of our Rec Center staff and how they are kind of ahead of the curve as far as being really inclusive to various communities. So really nice to hear. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Just a couple of quick updates here. Inglewood Transportation Advisory Committee met in March and had a discussion on the CIP budget request, which we saw again tonight, which included their, they elevated walk and wheel plan from tier two to tier one, which showed up in the plan tonight as well. And then they had a discussion on high accident locations, which we have a number in Inglewood and want to continue to keep an eye on those, especially as we think about traffic calming things. So wanted to bring that to your attention. Also had Housing Authority, Housing Authority meeting and nothing to report from. That was just a standard report that night. And finally, the Tri-Cities Homelessness Policy Group met, I think it was last week or the week before. And the one thing that's kind of, our coordinator has been out of town and is back now. The one thing that is moving forward at this point is a, we're putting out a, permanent supportive housing, yes, permanent supportive housing study, finding a contractor for that. So that's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Member Ward?
I attended the Region Nine opioid abatement task force meeting last Thursday. One of the challenges that the task force is having right now is securing a quorum. There has not been a quorum there for the last three months now, since December. And part of that is owed to the fact that every two years, certain bodies are required to submit their members to the task force, and those official nominations have not been made. So this council will be seeing shortly a resolution, I believe, to reappoint me or the member of the council's choice to the Region Nine opioid abatement task force as the representative for the cities of Sheridan, Littleton, and Inglewood. And the city manager and city attorney have been working on contacting those cities to secure their consent to that appointment as well. One of the interesting things that we were able to discuss during that time, even though we weren't able to conduct any official business allocating funds, was something that I feel particularly passionate about, which is support to families. When a family has a member that is experiencing a problem with opioid addiction or drug addiction in general, it's really disruptive to the family, and a lot of times they don't have places where they can turn. So getting them some support and even support for grieving family members who have lost someone to opioid addiction, I think will be an effective and beneficial use of the task force funds. The other thing that still kind of remains an open item with the task force is we did a survey of co-responders, and there are multiple different groups and philosophies related to co-responders across Rappahoe County. And I would like to see, and I'll be pushing for going forward, some more unity as far as information sharing and gathering. And there are some projects that we may be looking for to try to put the county's money to use across the county in a way that leverages resources that are already existing and in place.
Member Wright?
Thank you. Last, gosh, I think it was last Thursday, Member Russell and I were able to attend the ribbon cutting of the Arden. So it's been referenced a couple of times this evening. If you're able to take a tour of the new multi-unit facility off of Jason and just south of Jefferson, I believe it is, or Hampton, I would highly, highly recommend it. They have a swimming pool that's open year-round, dog facilities, multiple zen gardens, I guess I would say. Really, really, really nice place. They have studios, one, two, and a few three bedrooms. It's really nice. I also real quickly want to highlight some of the staff at the Inglewood Rec Center. It was sent to us in our Friday report by city manager, and then I've talked to Director Underhill about it on making sure the staff has been recognized. Last Tuesday, there was a crisis at the Rec Center where a guest there had an emergency issue. And the staff went above and beyond on trying to help this person, and unfortunately, she perished at the hospital the next day. So tomorrow, there are going to be different recognitions for the staff that attempted to help this guest. And then in honor of the person that perished, I guess she wore crazy headbands all the time. So the staff and those that knew her are going to be wearing a crazy headband in her honor. So if you plan on attending the Rec Center tomorrow, I'd recommend anybody going to go ahead and wear a crazy headband in her honor. So, but I just want to recognize the staff and say good job to everybody that attempted to help her. It was an existing medical condition that there was nothing that could have been done. So good job to all of them.
That's sad news, Member Wright. Is that going on all day tomorrow, just the, wearing the headbands or specific times? Do you know?
I believe it's all day. All the staff and anyone that knew her is going to be doing that.
My condolences to the family of that person that passed away. The, actually, so I guess getting back to boards and commissions, sustainability did meet last Tuesday night. The, just the big thing, the big item that was part of a brainstorming session was that they did look to, they had a conversation regarding native plant certification program potentially being instituted within Inglewood. Part of the reason why is that code enforcement is potentially giving tickets to people that have native grasses in their yards. And so this is a way for them that potentially could save some time in terms of ticketing that if they have a certification from the city or they were just brainstorming ideas, how they can get certified so that they don't take the time of code enforcement. So that took a good portion of the time. Obviously, this group is very, very passionate about this subject, so it's actually worthwhile to listen to from that meeting if you have the chance. So that was the big topic of conversation during sustainability. Anybody for council members' choice? Go ahead, Member Noonencamp.
I actually forgot something in my boarding commission report. I just wanted to add briefly on the Cultural Arts Commission. They also received public comment from a new group that has self-formed called the Inglewood Creative Community. And you may have heard or seen that we have had an influx of galleries and art studios, especially in the Broadway corridor, but really around the entire city. And this group is working on something that you may have seen online called Second Saturdays, which is very similar to the idea of like a First Fridays in the Santa Fe Arts District, where galleries and studios are specifically hosting events and doing gallery openings and doing art shows on the second Saturday of the month in any kind of creative maker business, not necessarily just galleries, to really bring a spirit of liveliness to the arts community downtown. I want to bring this up to this, so A that you're aware to the council, but also to know that the city, through the Cultural Arts Commission, gave them a grant. They are funding this organization to have their website up. They have an interactive map where you can find all of the cool galleries and studios and art spaces where you can engage. This group has very big ambitions. They actually would like to apply for this area of Inglewood to be an official arts district with the state and register for those benefits, something the city has looked into many times over the years, but we might be at a place with critical mass kind of the creative community to make that a more realistic option. And so wanted to let you know about that development. It's actually really exciting and cool to see what the community is doing kind of on their own without any other support. But also happy to see that the Cultural Arts Commission is supporting and partnering on this new endeavor. So Second Saturdays, look it up.
Thank you, Member Noonencamp. I'm a weak lead on this one, but I'll say it tonight. But I want to congratulate Tim Hosts for getting promoted to Director of Public Works within the city of James, Jonestown, Jonestown, right? Johnstown, yeah. You know, it's always bittersweet when we do lose an employee. I did lose an employee to another city, but obviously, in this regard, it's just, you know, he's grown a lot in the position when he was here in Inglewood. So I'm just happy for him to get that promotion to Johnstown. And, you know, it's, you know, whenever you're able to grow in your career, I'm always for it. So, but very, many thanks to Tim, just in case for the public wondering why he won't be in future meetings, it's because he's been promoted. So Sean, to you for city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. First of all, the Celebrate Inglewood event is going to be May seventeenth from ten to two. So if council would like to have a booth at that, I believe Krista's already reached out. And so we just encourage you to sign up for that. City Council often has a booth. And then the last thing is, we have, And then the last thing is we have extended the neighborhood grant deadline. The new grant deadline is April 25th. These are the grants that the neighborhood has to come up with 25% of it, but they can be up to 3,000. It can be, you know, little lending libraries. It could be, you know, a bench for a common area within the neighborhood. Neighbors have done some creative things. But anyway, we've extended those because we only have three applications so far. So if you or your neighborhoods or your constituents have projects and you can help us get the word out about that, we'd appreciate it. And glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions for Sean? All right. Anything else, Sean? All right, everyone, the meeting is now adjourned. It's about 10:50. Everyone, have a great evening. See you next Monday.